Okay, we want to welcome everybody this afternoon. Appreciate you being here for our work session. We'll just dive right into it. We have, it looks like we have many UDOT peoples here, so whoever is in charge will turn the time over to you.
Good to see you in charge, but voluntold. My name is Tyler Allen. I am the UDOT Environmental Manager over this project. With me I have Jeff Erdman, who's our Project Manager from UDOT, and Rob White and Nathan Peterson are our Region Leadership with us today. Along with that, we have Avenue Consultants, who's been doing a lot of heavy lifting on this project with Justin Peterson as our Consultant Environmental Lead, and HG Kunsler as our Consultant Project Manager. So with that, I'll jump into this. We're talking about the I-84 Mountain Green Interchange Study. We've been working on this for quite a while here, and we're kind of excited to get into it and talk about this and see where we're at today. We started it in summer of 2023 with the pre-environmental, call that scoping time period. We got together with stakeholders in the area and had a Stakeholder Coordination CCT team. That included people from the community, emergency responders, local landowners, that group, to try to get some information and identify what the issues are in the area and what potential solutions might be. We also looked at the data of traffic analysis and roadway design to try to understand what the situation is currently and where we're looking at in the future. That led us into the spring of 2024, when we actually began the actual environmental analysis, which was our environmental assessment time period. And that's how we got to define our purpose and need. We had some initial public outreach with the scoping meeting that was open to the public. The comment period ending in May of 2024, that was open so that we could know if we're heading in the right direction, what the issues were for the general public beyond the CCT team, in case we'd missed anything. From that, we refined our action and our design, and we completed our resource analyses that summer and fall. We conducted public out, and we're going to be conducting further public outreach online on April 22nd and in-person on April 23rd. That'll be a public hearing, online public meeting, so. On from there. Okay. So what is the purpose and need of the project? It really should be needs and purpose, because the needs drive what the purpose of the project is. The needs are what is the issue that we're trying to solve. The needs include that we have an existing roadway connections between I-84, SR-167, and Trappers Loop Road, an old highway road, that really provide a less direct route to the regional traffic that are heading up the canyon there. And it mixes with that local traffic in Mountain Green. That less direct connection between I-84, Trappers Loop, results in that heavy mixture of local traffic causing congestion throughout Mountain Green. SR-167 Old Highway Road are not built for that congestion. They're not intended or suited to that regional traffic. They have lower speed limits, smaller shoulders, lower travel lanes, and a lot of access points, driveways, other roads coming in, that create those buildups that we see there, especially in heavy time periods of travel up the canyon. And so that gives us back to our purpose. Our purpose is, it's not going backwards, to improve the system linkage in the Mountain Green area. And system linkage, when you're looking at it, is trying to understand the connectivity of the roadways between collector systems and interstate, and these regional traffic and local traffic. Trying to separate that as much as we can to alleviate traffic issues. Currently, if you look on the one side of the slide here, regional traffic mixes with the local traffic. Local roads, east and west, they get congested, and we cause those issues up. And trying to get the local and regional traffic separated. By creating a direct route from I-84 to Trappers Loop Road, it separates out the local from the regional traffic more and provides a heavier, a larger capacity connection for that regional traffic, so that we don't have congestion in the local roads. With that, I'll pass on to Jeff for the other slides and more detail about what we're planning on the project.
On our next slide, we're going to be going over our proposed action. This slide just is an overview of our project study area from the two existing interchanges. The interchange to the east, otherwise the Peterson exit, we found no impact to that. We may not be doing any work with that interchange. The interchange to the west is existing half interchange. We do plan on closing ramps to that interchange. The access underneath it will be available to use. These are numbered, are lettered, A through F. And starting at A, that's where the proposed location of the new interchange would be. And we will be extending a new road to the existing old highway. Next one is C. At the intersection between the old highway and the new road will be a signalized intersection that will allow for pedestrian crossing across the highway. As mentioned before, we will be closing the exit 92 and moving. Sorry about that. We will be removing the westbound on-ramp and the eastbound off-ramp. And letter E is the existing rest area. We will be removing that rest area with this project. And just to note, the department has evaluated the current rest area and the need of that rest area, and we have found that that rest area isn't functioning as it should, and we are looking at removing it and whether this proposed action would continue.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
If I may. Is the rest stop, so you're going to take out the rest stop, are you proposing a rest stop anywhere else? Or is that going to be up to us as a county to bring about economic?
That's something that the department is reviewing the need for existing rest areas as, you know, the area develops. You know, there's less of a need to have a rest area, but you know, there's currently a rest area, or it's a park, I believe it's a park and ride in South Ogden, South Lea area. Yeah, I don't know the status.
I was just wondering, because we have a lot of truckers that come through there and stop daily, and it's fun. So I'm just curious if there was any kind of a, if in your planning you had done anything with that.
No, we currently have not. And so the last bullet, F, is just talking about providing shared use trails and being compatible with the new road. The next slide is just a closer view of some of the proposed action that we, I had talked about. In the upper left-hand corner is that signalized intersection with the old highway and with Trappers Loop Road. Just below that is showing a bridge crossing over the creek, and there will be, it will be wide enough to provide a trail system underneath that. And as we go to the right is where the proposed interchange is located, and that will have signals at each of the movements for the on and off ramps.
So I'm sorry, can you go back a second? So number three is an existing rest area that's going to remain, or that's just the overlay?
So that, so that is the location of the existing rest area?
Where you're taking it.
That will be removed with this action?
So why would you need one at the stop line, at the interchange itself?
It's just for the movements as you're exiting the interstate and just the cross traffic as you're exiting and entering the ramps. And we will just, we will have time available after the presentation to discuss some of the specifics to this project. And we also have a list of frequently asked questions that we'd like to go over with you guys. The environmental document has been published and released, and it's open for public comment. We do have it online on our website. You can actually scan that QR code as well to get access directly to the document. We do have it located in our central office, at our Region One office, and it's here at, I believe, at the clerk's office. Yep. Our next steps, as Tyler had mentioned, we are planning an online public meeting on the 22nd, and then we will be holding our in-person meeting at the Mountain Green Middle School the next day on the 23rd. And that is where we will be receiving our comments, as it's stated here. Comment, the comment period has begun April 4th. We will go on through May 8th. And then the next, once we review all those public comments and vet those out and make updates to the document, we do plan on publishing a decision this summer of 2025. We do have several ways that if people have additional questions, we do have a hotline number, an email, and our website. And then we did put together, based on our original public open house from our scoping meeting, we did generate a lot of comments that I'd like to go through, and I was going to have HG walk through those.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us be here. We did recognize from the public, there were a number of questions and concerns, and we imagine you have some of those as well. I would probably open it up to what questions do you have? These are some general ones that we've identified, we think that are probably fairly consistent with what we heard during our scoping or as we've been talking with members of the public as well. I'll go through those really quickly, and then if you have specific ones other than this, we can address those first, or I'll jump back and address these specifically if you have questions about any of these. So, question, does the proposed action impact exit 96, the Peterson interchange? I think that was addressed in the presentation that Tyler and Jeff provided. No, it will not impact that interchange at all. Could the exit 92 interchange stay open in addition to the new interchange at I-84? The answer to that is no, as Jeff indicated. There are several reasons for that. We can go into details with those if you'd like to later as well. Is the new interchange designed compatible with the potential future road connection to the south? The answer in short is yes, it would be compatible. If anything is desired or planned to be connected to the south, that would be a completely separate action that would need to be brought up by the county. What happens to UDOT Mountain Green Rest Area, as we mentioned, it will be closed. There is a monument that is associated with that. We talked about the Peter Ogden Memorial. Very significant for this area, we recognize that. As we've talked with people in the area, there has been some that have said, yes, we'd like to see that somewhere. The details behind that, we would default to the time when design is being done for the interchange, as to where would be the best place to locate it. There's a lot of complexity related to how you would do that, the way it's constructed right now versus what it would look like or need or want to be looked like, wanted to look like in the future. So those details will work out during design. Okay, I just pushed the forward button. Okay. Any questions?
Can you go back two slides to the FAQs?
Oh, to the FAQs? This one right here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so these are ones that we just answered. So if there is anything specifically related to those that you'd like me to go into more depth, I'd be glad to do that. So again, proposed action of closing 96, exit 96, no, we're not affecting the Peterson interchange in any way. Okay. Any questions to that?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Blocker. Would, I mean, not to exit 96, but to exit 92. Can you expound on that a little bit, on why you decided to close the westbound and eastbound?
Absolutely. Thank you for giving the opportunity to address that a little bit more. There are several reasons that would, that have combined into us needing to change or to close that interchange. One, what we saw in the existing conditions, and part of the purpose and need of the project was to eliminate that regional and local traffic. And what we've seen in the studies that we're doing is that there, the roadway itself, State Road 167, between that interchange and Trappers Loop Road, there's not sufficient shoulders, there's some deficiencies related to that section of roadway that is not compatible with regional traffic and local traffic. It's great for local traffic, but we also see accidents that are occurring. Part of the CCT that we heard from them is like, that is really difficult for people to get on and off the roadway in that section of the road. And so that is one reason, is that we have that mix of local and regional traffic. If, another reason, and perhaps one of the trumping reasons, is that exit, that the distance between exit 92 and this new interchange would not meet federal standards, which is a three-mile spacing between interchanges in a rural condition, a rural area. And so with that, as we've needed to complete what we call an interchange justification report through federal highway, federal highway has reemphasized that same issue is that that interchange would need to be, would need to be closed because of the close proximity of where the proposed interchange would go in the existing. Other things related to that would be just that, to keep in mind that the interchange itself, the crossing of it, would remain open, so access going between the north side and the south side would remain open for those that are needing to access to the south. Any follow-up questions related to that? Did I address that? Anything else?
So, are you going to leave it to, I mean, you're going to, are you going to barricade it, are you going to block it? You're going to rebuild something over it?
In way, in way of removing it?
Yeah.
So the interchange, the ramps themselves would be removed? And that would be, and so reclaiming that whole area, be it with landscaping or something, that would help with drainage that would be associated with runoff in those particular areas?
So if there is a real emergency, and we can't get through, then what?
Yeah, I think that's a great question that people have brought up in the scoping meeting. We did some analysis, and I'll probably have Justin help provide some more detail on this one, but if you're interested. But what we found is that although travel time, emergency response time would increase slightly, it was not, it was not needing to keep it open. And if we start looking at emergencies that may occur in that area, really, you're receiving response times from your local fire station in Morgan or in Mountain Green, and we understand coming up from the valley, from Ogden City. Well, the new interchange would actually provide better access to that whole general area, because they're going to be able to come from all directions to support or respond to any type of incident in the specific, in that general area. If there happened to be an incident that was up on the mountain, this would actually, by closing that, it would direct the traffic to come back to the new interchange and have greater accessibility for anyone to leave and to come in if they were responding to that emergency. Does that make sense?
Mixing regional and local traffic. That's where, you know, the old highway itself has a lot more traffic on that. So emergency response, the vehicles themselves would have a lot more time on the old highway itself trying to get to a business, our residential. And during our public open house, we actually received conflicting comments from different emergency service representatives to whether it was valid to leave it open or closed. But based on our analysis, we do feel that having the interchange where it's located and closing that would eliminate, reduce, it would reduce traffic on the old highway itself.
I'm going to make a comment towards that. Specifically, the emergency, maybe the difference in information that you got. There's two different emergency services here in the county, right? We have Mountain Green Fire. They provide only fire service. They do not have an ambulance service. All ambulance service comes out of Morgan City, right here next door. So if an ambulance does need to go down there to a home, say, close to exit 92, they would have to backtrack back up to the new interchange and then go down the canyon, because there's no medical facility here in Morgan that can handle any type of patient care. That's the biggest concern, and that's why, from the fire perspective, Chief Brindell in Mountain Green, that's not a concern to him, because he can get to anything close. From an ambulance perspective, our chief, Boyd Carrigan, here in Morgan, that's a big concern, because now we're creating a dead-end road, essentially. So, and I think the fact that the bridge will remain and access will remain north to south actually is more frustrating to some degree, because it's like, well, there's no extra cost to keep this interchange here, and we're being told you have to remove it. I respectfully disagree. We don't have to remove it, and you could go through the process to keep it open, especially given the fact that, you know, you could easily add 10 minutes to ambulance transport time if they had to go clear down there and then backtrack to the new interchange and go back down the canyon to Ogden. So that's probably why you heard two different things. That's my concern, representing the ambulance service here, is that we could be creating a pretty big problem without realizing it. And I don't know if there's a world where, the truth is, coming up the canyon, I don't care if that ramp closes, but going down, it would be nice if you could just get on. And I don't know if there's a world where it's a quarter interchange versus a half interchange, but maybe that's something we could look at, I don't know.
I think bringing up that it currently is a half interchange and it does not provide a full access. And that's, you know, really the benefit of having this new interchange would be full access.
And I totally agree with that sentiment. I mean, don't get me wrong, in fact, it'll be wonderful, the ambulance coming from Morgan City to get to Mountain Green will be much quicker, because they won't have to get off on the Peterson exit and then traverse the old highway for near as long, provided that the emergency is at that end of the county. The issue will be transporting if they are down at that far end near exit 92.
And that's where it comes down to the justification of a new interchange. As we went through the document, Tyler had mentioned, kind of the need, and then we figure out what the purpose is. And so kind of leaving, creating a new interchange, leaving the existing half interchanges, it creates a conflict of the purpose. And that would be my only perspective, and I'm not sure how it would work otherwise. I don't know. Just, just.
I'd have Justin respond as well. I'd bring it back to the fact that we design things to standards, federal and state standards. And the federal standard for rural interchanges is spacing of three miles.
But we both know that there's plenty of interchanges that we could point to in the state that are spaced closer than that. Even in rural areas, there are several that exist.
Well, our desire is that we do not want to design to minimal.
I get that. I'm just saying, I don't like that excuse, because it feels like we're saying, oh, it's the rules. We can't mess with the rules. Well, we all know that there's an exception to the rule in every scenario.
Absolutely, if it makes sense to be able to do that. There, in this particular case, what we find and why we have the recommendations that we do from the federal standards, the local standards, is to help minimize safety concerns and issues. And specifically on an interstate system as I-84, as you have more entrance and exit points, that creates conflict points. And more conflict points increase accidents. And that is why we want to be able to design to what the federal standards are and not jeopardize those.
This is Commissioner Blocker again. I appreciate your, all your hard work and design and everything you're doing. I'm going to echo Commissioner Newton in that, heaven forbid, if something were to happen, like Sinclair westbound, and all those people east side of Mountain Green have no way to get out, they're trapped there, that would be terrifying. It would obviously be a big, some natural big disaster or something, but it would be terrifying. Right now, there's no other outlet from that area.
And that's, you know, really the benefit of having this new interchange would be full access.
And I, I totally agree with that, that sentiment. I mean, don't get me wrong, in fact, it'll be wonderful, the ambulance coming from Morgan City to get to Mountain Green will be much quicker because they won't have to get off on the Peterson exit and then traverse the old highway for, for near as long, provided that the emergency is at that end of the county. The issue will be transporting if they are down at that far end near Exit 92.
And that's where it comes down to the justification of a new interchange. As we, as we went through the document, Tyler had mentioned kind of the need, and then we figure out what the purpose is. So kind of leaving, creating a new interchange, leaving the existing half interchanges, it creates a conflict of the purpose. And, and I, that would be my only perspective, and I'm not sure how, how it would work otherwise. I don't know.
Just, just, I just. I'd have Justin respond as well. I'd bring it back to the fact that we design things to standards, federal and state standards. And the federal standard for rural interchanges is spacing of three miles.
But we both know that there's plenty of interchanges that we could point to in the state that are spaced closer than that. Even in rural areas, there are several that exist.
Well, our, our desire is that we do not want to design to minimal.
I, I get that, I'm just saying, I don't like that excuse because it, it feels like we're saying, oh, it's the rules, we can't, we can't mess with the rules. Well, we all know that there's an exception to the rule in every scenario.
Absolutely, if it makes sense to be able to do that. There, in this particular case, what we find and why we have the recommendations that we do from the federal standards, the local standards, is to help minimize safety concerns and issues. And specifically on an interstate system as I-84, as you have more entrance and exit points, that creates conflict points. And more conflict points increase accidents. And that is why we want to be able to design what, to what the federal standards are and not jeopardize those.
This is Commissioner Blocker again. I appreciate your, all your hard work and design and everything you're doing. I'm gonna echo Commissioner Newton in that, heaven forbid, if something were to happen, like Sinclair westbound, and all those people east side of Mountain Green have no way to get out, they're trapped there, that would be terrifying. It would obviously be a big, some natural big disaster or something, but it would be terrifying. Right now, there's no other outlet from that area if something were blocking them from getting on the new interchange. The new, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think so. I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense. We appreciate the concern that's been brought up with emergency response and evacuations, particularly for that neighborhood that's closest to Exit 92. I think for us as a team, it would be helpful to understand the frequency there are issues in that neighborhood, how many times has there been a need for emergency response in that We know from our, from talking to the public and our traffic analysis, we know that the traffic problems we presented happen on a frequent basis, particularly during the summer. And so as we were evaluating this, this proposed action and discussing whether or not to close Exit 92, we, we fully understood that by closing Exit 92, we solve the problem that everybody experiences on a weekend in the summer or on a powder day. That does come with some trade-offs though. And so as, as we talked about as a team, we, we weighed the trade-off and concluded that closing Exit 92 would provide an overall benefit to the community from traffic operations standpoint. In our environmental assessment, which we've referred to several times, Section 3.14 talks about our traffic analysis, and it shows the traffic performance that would occur without the interchange and with the interchange. And what you'll see is that there's an overall improvement along all of SR-167 and Old Highway Road. Because of that improvement, if an emergency situation occurred where an evacuation or a response was necessary, those improvements to the road network would benefit response times. It may even offset that backtracking that may occur to have to get down to Ogden. And so this was an issue that we did explore, but there was some, maybe there's some information we're missing. And so if, if you can provide us with input on how frequent emergency responses occur in that area.
I can get you our ambulatory call-out data, or do you want it specifically for the west end of Mountain Green?
It would be nice to have it for all of Mountain Green if it's easy enough to isolate our own, on our own, and see what's going on for that neighborhood to the west.
Who am I sending that to?
If you wouldn't mind making a part of official comment in response to the EA, you can send it to me, or you can send it to the contact information on, on our slide in the presentation here.
Okay, I will get that tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Just an additional comment, I mean, I want to be clear, very happy with, with the interchange, very happy with where we're at. I'm not, not arguing what's been done here, just wanted to bring that up because it has been brought up by, by our, our ambulance chief, by multiple residents, and it's a concern. It's something that I brought up as a concern when I was first interviewed about this. I know other, other commissioners brought it up as well, so I know it's not the first time you're hearing it, and it won't be the last, believe me, you're gonna hear it a lot probably at the public hearings. But just to be clear, like, very happy with, with the whole plan, other than that one piece, there's some concern there.
Yeah, and if I could clarify, the whole purpose of this next round of public involvement and coming to, talking to you is encouraging everybody to read how we analyze that particular issue in the environmental assessment. What, did we get something wrong? Did we miss something? Let us know, because the whole purpose of this process is to make an informed decision. Hard to make an informed decision if we don't have all the information that's relevant to the issues. So if we miss something, please let us know.
Is there a way that you could possibly not completely take it out to begin with, but put barricades up and see what happens and if, before you completely destroy it, to have it there for a period of time and see what happens? And if it needs to be reopened, it would be easier to do so than have, after it's been completely destroyed?
I would, I would suggest I'd follow what Justin had just recommended to you. I'd make that as a comment or a question specifically related to that, that we could take under evaluation and see what, what we consider. As, as we originally discussed doing that, it was mentioned by those who oversee those standards is no, we would not do that, we would not allow that to happen. We don't do that on state facilities.
Okay, so Exit 96.
Six, the Peterson exit.
That's closer than three miles.
It is just under the three miles, it's like 2.6 miles, to be exact. There was evaluation whether we should be looking to the west or like, instead of having that curve going to the, from the junction at Trappers Loop and 167, bringing that to the east where we have it located right now, could we take it to the west and, and get that three-mile spacing? Number of issues related to that, one, there are more impacts to resources and properties associated with that. Years ago, when the study was completed, UDOT purchased right-of-way along the corridor where we are showing it right now. And so with those impacts, those things that we evaluated, we identified, we would keep it there, and it was still okay to keep that at the two-point, I think it's 2.67 miles from, from those interchange, from that other interchange with Peterson. Does that make sense?
So is there any plans for that additional right-of-way that you purchased, the state of UDOT purchased that goes off of, well, you've got the main one that comes down, and then there's one that shoots off towards Old Highway. Is there something within that that you plan on doing or?
I'm, I'm gonna try to understand where you're speaking specifically, like the rest area, where the rest area is, is that? How about on this one, is that?
You're just talking further down in front of these?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a break-off of the main one that you've got the freeway going. There's another corridor that they've purchased.
Oh.
I know, I know where that's at.
And I didn't know if that had something.
Yeah, you're talking about the, okay, yeah, the property that they purchased.
I didn't know if it had anything to do with it, yeah, that one, right there.
Do you see that blue polygon in the box that has the two in it?
Yeah.
So, is that, I think that's the property you're talking about?
No?
No? Because that, that is UDOT-owned, and it does kind of go to the northeast and connect to Old Highway Road.
It does, yeah.
It does. And so if that's the property you're referring to, we're utilizing some of that for detention basin.
Yeah.
And that's both of those blue areas? Both of those blue areas, and so a little background story on the location of those detention basins, there are natural low spots or near natural low spots along the extension of Trappers Loop Road. The northern one, we initially had farther south because that's the most ideal spot, but knowing that UDOT owns a lot of that property just to the north of it, we shifted it to the north to minimize the amount of right-of-way that would be needed from adjoining private property.
So I have two, two additional questions. First, how much have we spent thus far on this EA?
Our, our budget right now is just under $2 million, and we have not spent that, or we're not even close to that.
So the legislature apportioned $5 million towards the, the project to do the EA and, and some more, just trying to get an idea of where we were at on that.
Yeah, there, there is substantial remaining in that.
Okay, awesome. And then the other question, and I don't know, maybe Rob's the best one to answer this one. Is it your understanding that we need to have some dollars allocated to the actual project before the EA is approved, or is this something where the EA gets approved and then, okay?
I was just talking to Brandon the other day about this to make sure that I understood, because you, typically that is the way it works. However, in this location, because of how it is, the jurisdiction where it's at, we don't have to have that, but we do have that additional funding from the EA that if, if it's requested, we can add that to it.
So there is something we can kick in and say, yeah, we've got, we've got some seed money here, I guess.
Yeah, so as long as we can do that, as long as it's allowed, we can move that forward and go ahead. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gotten near that EA amount or that $5 million amount, so we, we can start. My understanding is.
That's great news. Awesome, thank you.
Sign the, the final decision document, once we get through the comment period and address the comments.
I mean, I.
Sorry, just to add to that, generally, the purpose of that is that you are continuing to work on the project in some way. And, and we don't want to tie up generally a project that is not gonna be doing anything for a number of years, and that's kind of the reason behind that policy. Yeah, Michael or Mike, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
No, that's, that's great. Just appreciate the effort to, to do it and also do it under the, the budget that, that was allotted, so thank you for that.
Absolutely, we recognize that this is an important interchange for the whole area. And so we feel like we are striving to make that balance between an area that is in high development mode or potential development and providing the access that is necessary to state facilities. And so we appreciate the cooperation that we've received from all stakeholders involved throughout this whole process. It's been a very good, enjoyable actually experience to be able to work with you. Any other questions?
Yeah. The signal light there, the interchange, the in, Trappers and Old Highway and, yes, that one. Was roundabout considered there?
Yeah, yes, it was. Roundabouts have a general sentiment that they're the solutions to all problems, and is generally can be the case, but it all depends on the situation associated with it. In this particular case, because of the volumes that are coming from the adjoining streets, it is not the ideal. We would actually have more failure accompanied or occurring at that intersection than with the signal. And so that, with that signal, it helps divide out and provide appropriate timing for the amount of traffic that is occurring. Usually with signals too, they're, they're, they're associated with prime times during the day when they're gonna receive more traffic. And so in this particular case, as an example, if you have a high volume of traffic that is coming off of Trapper, Trappers Loop, coming on a snow day, going back to other locations from the ski resort or other places to the north, there would be a high volume that would be coming through that, that intersection. If there were tra, if there was traffic on Old Highway or on the existing part of that West Lay 167, chances are they would not get access to be able to get out through into the roundabout because there would be such a constant flow of other traffic coming through. So then it becomes a problem for other things, but it can be regulated better with a signal.
The, the study they did said, I believe I read, seven-minute wait time if it was a roundabout as opposed to less than a minute if it were with signalized lights.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big difference.
It's a huge difference.
Big change.
Huge difference.
Other questions?
Carrie, do you have anything? No.
Again, I, I don't know if you want us to have a final word, I would probably give that to you, but again, we appreciate the time and being able to be here, appreciate the cooperation and input that we've received from this council and from your citizens within the county and specifically in this local area. Thank you.
I have one big question, maybe Rob can answer this. And I know you won't be able to give me an answer. What's the timeframe?
You weren't gonna let me get away without getting up here, were you? That's a very good question that I don't, you're right, I don't know the answer to that yet. I know this has been identified as a project that, from, I've heard from legislators that want to get this done prior to the Olympics. I, I don't, we're currently programmed with our TIF money to about 2030, 2029, 2030, and so I, I think that's, that's going to be the timeframe when we're looking at having new funding available to program into, into projects. And, but that's kind of timeframe looking at, you know, and, and it all, some of it depends on, is there other funding sources available that we could use? But right now with our TIF money, which is the pot that this would likely come out of, we're probably talking 20, 2030 would be when it could be funded.
So, so between now and then, you'll be working on structural, the engineering?
We could, we could start engineering, we have a little bit of money, as we mentioned, we could start engineering drawings, we could, if there's any, I know there's a little bit of right-of-way that we may, maybe need to get, not a lot, but yeah, we, we could start other, other parts of the project as well.
And then how long does it take to build it once you've started the actual moving dirt?
This, you know, best-case scenario, it could be probably, it would be a quick year. The, the challenging part on this is you have lots of fills, and so you're probably, the first year you come in and place the, the embankments and let those settle, and then year two, you could go in and build it. And so you probably want to do some preliminary work maybe the year before, like in the fall or late summer, and have that sit, and then you could start on the construction the next spring. So I, I would say best-case scenario is, is 18 months to build it. Yes, please do.
One of the main issues that we see in this area is the Union Pacific railroad line that is on the south side. We've identified that as being very critical with the coordination. They actually own the right-of-way through much of the I-84 area, through this area, ironically. And so I recognize that, recognizing that as an issue, we have started that, those discussions with them to get their, their, not necessarily buy-in, but make them aware of what is being planned for this area and to receive any comments that they may have that would be maybe where they would see red flags as to what our proposed design is. We've received those comments back, and they don't have, at this point in time, any concerns with what is being proposed. But there will be substantial walls, and as, as Rob mentioned, there will be fill material and a number of things that will be required in order to get that interchange constructed.
With Union Pacific, that, that time period between now and when the, it is actually constructed, we'd have time to work any questions or concerns they might have out. And so once we, once we get the funding, then we can hit the ground running, as it were.
So in other words, if we can go out and we can get the funding next, next season, next legislative season, you would start next year?
Well, we.
I'm just saying an if, it's just a, you know, thought.
Like I said, it would take, it would take some time for the engineering, and it would take some time to, with the coordination with Union Pacific and any additional right-of-way that we needed. I, I don't see it as being, right-of-way being a big issue here on this one because we own most of it, but it, it would take some time to, to get that up and out to construction, I guess. And timeframe, we're probably talking two years to get it out from, from when we start to when we put it out to construction, so.
Wow, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll try for the funding for next year, okay? Right, Carrie?
Right, Carrie.
Uh-huh, sure.
Is there anything that is pushed, well, outside of the, the future potential for Olympics, right? Is there anything prior to that time that is pushing that schedule forward?
Yes.
Should be aware of.
Economic development.
Okay.
We can't, we, you know, that's a major part of the economic development plan for that area is to get this in. And yes, it is a priority in, in my opinion, and it's a, I mean, I'd just like to see it done. It's been in the books for a lot of years, and, and I seriously would like to see it happen as soon as we can. I mean, we can do a lot of things as a commission with our legislators, and when you've got two of the legislature legislators that like this area, there's a lot we can do, and they'll just have to get their muscle behind it all.
If I may add to that, we, that's the bulk of our development residential as well on the, is in that area of the county. We have over 600 permitted lots going in in the next couple of years. So if you average three people a household, it's 1,800. So that's also our concern, not just for ambulatory services, but because that is the bulk of our development, nine springs. So that's also our concern, not just for ambulatory services, but because that is the bulk of our development, nine springs. You know, they're in Lieutenant Governor's study, if that goes through all the development, all the checks essentially, we've already written for development in that area. We've just passed four different town center areas for that. That's 33% commercial on top of high density residential taking, that's why there's more than one concern than ambulatory services as far as taking out that west on-ramp.
Got you. Is there specific schedules related to those developments that you're aware of at this point or know about?
Yeah, they're in the DA. We've already had our first DA meeting.
I think that, that would be helpful as well to know.
I've noted that to put in your.
If there is some type of timeframe that they have in mind to complete those developments. Because we totally understand that is going to draw more traffic to this area. So, and the reason for, another reason for the interchange?
Absolutely.
Probably in the next three years, you'll see pretty explosive growth in that, that general region. Just a lot of developers have had agreements in place for some time in that area, but have not acted. They're, they're getting to the point where they're ready to act, so.
Can Carrie add something?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, that's not my choice, it's mine.
You need to sit down for me, Rob. You can though. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment based on that question that you just asked, Rob. And I'm, I'm somewhat speaking out of the comments that I've heard from the commission. So if I'm phrasing it incorrectly, please let me know. But I think that from an economic development standpoint, that's important as well. But I think as we tee up the Olympics and we're ready for this Olympic process, I think it, it's important to this community to have something to offer rather than just a bare interchange when that process takes place, right? And so I think it's important to have, you know, some time after the interchange is in place for some of that entrance into this community to be, to be developed. And look, I mean, again, this is, this is where an awful lot of the state, well, just about everybody will be coming from the south, right, to be, and coming through that interchange to access Snow Basin through that Olympic process. And I think it's, I think it's important to this community to show something that makes sense and looks appropriate rather than just an interchange that's been completed six months before with, with a bare piece of land. And that being said, just for, for the information, and I think that there, I think that Commissioner Fackrell alluded to this, but obviously, I think all that you doc can really speak to is current funding constraints and, and I, and I think they've done that appropriately in this particular case. But I will say that, that I'm hearing priority from legislative leadership on figuring out a funding mechanism that moves this quicker than, than the traditional TIF funding process. So I'll continue to coordinate that with legislators, but I feel like there's, there's good movement in that, in that process. And I think they've just been kind of waiting for this process to play out and, and to close up. And then I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities in the future to, to make that move. I'm not sure I'm 100% confident about next year, Blaine, but we'll.
All we can do is try.
But I will say that next year, I, I do expect to see progress by next year. I mean, full funding is a whole nother story, but I do expect to see funding next year.
We just don't want you to stop. We just don't want you to stop trying to push forward.
Thanks, Carrie. Appreciate it. Appreciate all of you taking the time to come and share with us and look forward to moving forward in the process. We're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll be right back. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone, being here, both here in person and virtually. We appreciate everybody here to participate. We're going to start with an invocation. I'll give that. And then if you'll follow me in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it. Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee. We give thee thanks for our blessings, especially the blessing of being free and being able to act in the things that we are able to do in both our religion and our, in our society. We're grateful for this community in which we live, all the people that are good people that are here and that try and help one another. We ask thee to bless each and every one of them, their families, their children, as they go about trying to do those things that are right. We pray, Heavenly Father, thy blessings will be upon us this evening as we go about this county government work that we have. And we ask that we can all treat each other with kindness and do the things that are best for this community. We love and appreciate thee. We're thankful for all the blessings that we enjoy and have. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look through the consent agenda items? Need thing that we need to talk about. Okay, I'll look for motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any, any declarations of conflict of interest this evening? Okay. Blaine? I have one with Buster, nine lines. Nine springs, nine lines, nine lines. So I'll just declare that. And now we'll turn over our public comments. If there's anyone here that has a public comment that's not, that has nothing to do with our public hearings this evening. If you'll just keep it to three minutes, we'll turn the time over to, to anyone. Okay, seen none? We will go to our first presentation, E., Chris Trumaya. Thanks for being here, Chris.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Looks like you worked hard on this.
A little bit. It, it all works out in the end, right? Just like to do a quick little introduction of our building inspection team as well as code enforcement. So my name's Chris Trumaya. I've been a resident of Morgan County gratefully for two, two whole months now. I spent 20 years as a career firefighter and I've got 10 years of code enforcement experience through a couple of different areas. My counterpart, Dustin Little. Dustin and I drive pretty much around the county literally every day, primarily to do business, building inspections. And as, just as we're doing that, we're, we're learning the different skills. We're learning different techniques and different things, getting trained by Dave Webster. So Dustin's, Dustin's been a Morgan County resident, which many of you know, it seems like everybody knows him. So he's been here 30 years and he's got eight years as a building contractor. And then he's also got a bachelor's degree in construction management. He's got a wealth of knowledge of this area and it's been very beneficial to be able to take part in that. And, and the introductions have been great. Oh, well, we don't want to skip that picture, but look at his smiling face. So that's us in a cramped office, but it works. It's, it's been really good to be able to have the planning and building team there together. It's helping with.
Is that Jeremy sleeping in the background?
That's his, his reclinable chair, you know? But yeah, that works out, but it, it's been really good being able to get the group together. If we've got any questions, it's good to bounce them off of each other, especially with Josh and with Dave heading that up. But it's helping the five of us learn in there. So it's been, it's been great. Our primary responsibilities are building inspections. Part of that is, you know, going around the community and checking for individuals that might be, you know, just have a, a building going on, they're building it. Maybe they didn't know that they needed to have a permit. We go up, we start communications with them. And I think people are really appreciative of that. We try to do as an educational basis. You know, we have ran into some that are building and they know that they have to have permits. And we start that process going down there to be able to help them understand why they need them and get them in and get permits going on. Part of our focus is obtaining the certifications. Dustin's a lot better at that than I am. He's obtained two of his certifications already. And he's, he's able to take on a lot of those inspections that we were having to give out to the third-party contractor. So kudos to Dustin on getting those done. We have scheduled trainings with Dave, Dave Webster, our chief building official. And that's been very beneficial with his wealth of knowledge through Reber County and then also in Washington County. He's been, he's been great to be able to help us with that. So it's going to be a wealth of knowledge to, to have go out when he decides to. We're trying to talk him into another couple of years. And then also our code compliance investigations, our communications with the public, and then our documentation. So again, we try to keep code compliance to an education, educational. And then we come up with timeframes to be able to help the residents, be able to, to be able to, you know, just give them a little bit of time to help them clean things up. So primarily for code enforcement, it's ensuring compliance with local laws, ordinances, and regulations regarding property conditions, zoning, health, and safety. Health and safety, code enforcement helps protect the health, safety, and well-being of the residents by ensuring that properties are maintained according, according to established standards. Property values, well-enforced codes help maintain. Property values, well enforced codes help maintain or increase property values benefiting homeowners and the local economy. Also quality of life, which help improves the overall quality of life by addressing issues like overcrowding housing, unsafe buildings and unsanitary conditions or nuisance properties. And kind of the unsanitary conditions and nuisance properties is what we're running into. Mostly some of the places that we've been and there's been a couple unsafe buildings. Some of our code enforcement challenges, and this is part of the stuff that, you know, why we have ordinances. And when used correctly, ordinances can help make all these benefits come true. So public resistance, residents may resist enforcement due to misunderstandings or concerns about costs. We try to help with that as much as possible, right? And, and there's some discussions that, that Dustin and I have with Josh. Some of the things that we're, we're doing to this point that I'll go into in a bit. Complexity of codes, some codes are very difficult to understand or more importantly be out of date, making enforcement very difficult. It's important that we do keep these up to date and we are working on these. Property owner cooperation, ensuring compliance without the cooperation of property owners can be very challenging. My dad always said, you catch more flies with honey than you do vinegar. And I try to use that implementation all the time. So, so some of the, some of the nuisance properties that we have been running into, I am not gonna give specific addresses. I've just tied a few things in with photos, but we've got rotten construction debris. That can harbor rodents, whether it be raccoon, rats, mice, doesn't, doesn't matter what it is. But then we've got mattresses and couches being stored outside. Appliances have tags on them, which we, you know, all know, they're manufactured to be utilized inside. They don't have weather protectant on them. Refrigerators are supposed to be used inside. They, they get tested by fire, not necessarily fire departments, but different testing agencies, which, which make things, you know, they make the standards. So, some of the other nuisance issues that we have, lot of RVs, abandoned RVs that are being lived in. We've got abandoned boats. And lots of barrels that are not labeled or identified. They could have had oil in them. Now they're open to the air with an open top. They fill up with water, then that oil spills all over, all over the property, which is definitely a health and safety issue. This was one of our first cases, and I'll just tell you where it was at, was up by the old, the secondary water building up by Como Springs, just west of Como Springs. Now you might say, well, Como Springs has a area that you can camp, which it does, but it's got designated campsites up there. And those are the only ones that are authorized to be using. Well, Dustin and I, after a few weeks of noticing that this RV wasn't going anywhere, and then we noticed in the snow that we had footprints, so we knew that somebody was living in it. We all, you can also see a hole that's, that was just off to the back of the RV, which is where their dump, where their waste pipes were. That was being dumped right there, literally five feet away from the river. It's something that we wanted to get taken care of. So what we did is we contacted the property owner and they had the problem resolved within three weeks. And the RV had been there for quite a while. So that's something that with a little bit of cooperation from property owners, you can help get that taken care of.
Was it cousin Eddie?
I was gonna go there, but I do appreciate, that's funny. But we do have, you know, occupied trailers in quite a few properties around the county. It is an ordinance that we are going to sharpen up. But it's, it's not legal to live in an RV in a non-designated recreation vehicle trailer park. So, and we know there's a few of them around, but it's, you're not allowed to live in an RV off of one of those designated sites. And that's something that it's, it's very important for people to know. It is, it is, you know, it's, sometimes there's hardships and, you know, if your house catches on fire, where am I gonna go? Yeah, there, there can be temporary uses that can be applied for, that you can stay in your RV for a little bit while you're building your house. That is one of those temporary uses that can be applied for, but it's, it's monitored. And, and that would be our responsibility to do. What I found out in my experience, most of these issues, just like these two properties, it, it turns into a, I hate to use the word drug house, but I just said drug house. So that, that's kind of what it, it turns out to be. And, and that's not anything that you want anywhere in your community. Residential property, storing commercial vehicles and supplies, doesn't matter if you're talking about a, you know, a hundred thousand dollar lot or a four hundred thousand dollar lot. It doesn't matter if your acreage is point two five or if it's, you got three acres. Commercial, the storing of commercial supplies in that makes it pretty difficult for other people that bought in a residential area to be happy with their surroundings. And this, all the complaints that we've responded on have been a, a referral of some type or a complaint. And as was this one. So three, there was three commercial buses. There's nine trailer or truck beds that have been detached from the trucks stored at the property. He's now got two of them removed. The truck beds are still there, but he's only got a few more days before he, he would be meeting with us again. Some of the great things about this job, you get to work with all the different departments and we love our public works cooperation. We were able to find this property that had dug out the, some of their driveway, they cut into the curb, removed the sidewalk. There's no sidewalk closed signs or anything. We came back, there's no permits. We were able to help this property owner. It's, it's a rental property, but we were able to help the property owner put up some signs, obtain permits and be able to go that route to be able to get them fixed. So doing it the right way. We've also got a property that's got a white picket fence in the right of way. And this causes a hazard for many things, right? But it, one of the things is snow removal. If the snow trucks were, if the plows were to be able to, or were unfortunate enough to tear that fence out, we would be responsible to fix it. And so that's why it's important. We're, we're trying to get the property owner to move them back. Other right-of-way violations, this Jeep sat, from what I was told, from November of last year until when we were able to get it gone, like right after we started. So, but having vehicles parked in the right of way is not a safety neither. Whether kids can ride up, run out from behind it, run out into the public street and tragedies, that would be, you know, amongst a huge tragedy. But those are part of the reasons as well as keeping them out of the way for plows. And then dumpsters. This was just recently brought to us by Public Works, that there were Robinson Waste was putting a lot of dumpsters in the right-of-ways. So rather than going to all the property owners, I made a phone call to Robinson Waste and they came out and they moved seven of them. We went out and checked. So we couldn't have done that without, without our Public Works team. Also working with them, graffiti removal. We're starting a graffiti hotline that we'll be able to put up on the website for people to make notice of graffiti. They can, they can put that down in there and we'll be able to have their geolocation. So we can, so we can forward that to Public Works. They can go out there and remove it. As well as if it happens to be in the city, we can forward it to them as well. But it was a really good thing where, where I was working before and graffiti just invites crime. It doesn't matter whether it's an election issue, it doesn't, or a political issue, doesn't matter if it's getting affiliated, but it's just a, it's an antagonizing thing for the public. Abandoned vehicles. This is probably one of the things that was surprising to me coming up here. And I, I was trying to stay away from it as much as I could until a few complaints started coming in and then, then they needed to be addressed. But my, my standard on enforcement is if I get referred out to a property to address, before I start writing that property up, I take a 360 look. I want to make sure everybody does get treated fairly. But I take a 360 look around that property to see what other things, you know, of the same violation would be there. We just don't want to get accused of treating one, one property different than another. So that's, that's one of the things that's happening. The property owners on the right, the photo on the right, they didn't even know that they had those vehicles there. They could have been there for 50 years, but there's trees growing out of them. And when we talked to them, they said, yeah, we will gladly take care of that. We are sorry. And you know what? We, we understand that. We're trying to work with the public and, and help them understand, you know, why different policies and what, why different ordinances are in place. But having abandoned vehicles on a property dripping who knows what out of them. Those, those vehicles have a lot, have a lot of chemicals that you're dropping, like on the picture on the left, you're dropping it onto residential properties. And it, it's definitely a nuisance for those that live around you. Off-premise signs. I don't know if you've taken a gander around the county lately, but Dustin and I came up with this to be able to, you know, you, you drive by, you come off the exit there and you just see all the signs there. And it's, it's sign haven. It doesn't matter if it's a like, political signs, it doesn't matter if it's small businesses, whatever it is, but those signs with the wind, they always blow down and they always end up down at the bottom or they end up all over the properties. And it's just not fair to the public to have to worry about that. So what we're doing is we're just, we're obeying, going by a city, county ordinance, excuse me, but we are picking the illegal signage up. We still allow, in ordinance, it's still allowed to have different event signs and different things like that which we're not doing anything with them. Along with that, we are calling the businesses that have those signs to let them know of the county ordinance. So that way they're not wasting money on their signs and then advertising out or putting them in the right areas. Non-permitted or temporary signs, we've picked over, we've picked up over a hundred signs. I mean, election season's been over for quite a while and we've got senate signs, everything else. So we've really tried to help clean up that area and all the areas throughout the county. So, tire storage, five different properties have this issue and I'm not just talking one tire, five tires, 10 tires. I'm talking a lot of tires. And if you want to get rodents building up around and snakes, oh, I hate snakes. That's where they're gonna be, right? So this guy right here has a lot of contacts. He called up GeoCycle and said, hey, what do you think would be the opportunity, what do you think about maybe giving us a dumpster? That we would be able to put out to allow the public to come dump some tires. It would clean up a lot of properties. They got back to us in about a week and we've arranged to put a dumpster for tires only at Public Works. We'll label it good, so nobody's putting trash in it. We'll monitor it. We're gonna have it at different timeframes. That way the public can take it up on their own initiative to clean up their property and bring it for free to that dumpster, which will then be cleaned up. That is huge savings, because I don't know if you've checked, but it, it's 10 to 15 bucks to be able to dispose of one tire. So we, we're hopefully, the people help us with that. We're hoping to get some social media advertisement out with that, but I, I think it definitely helps the community by a couple of things. It's free and it helps clean up the different properties, whether it's commercial, residential, doesn't matter what it is. But we're expecting that to start in the first part of June, end of May. So try to get that Memorial Weekend in there if we possibly can to help people clean things up. Non-permitted or expired permits, this is one of the things as we're going around the community, we're seeing unfinished buildings, which it's, it's required to make sure you have weather barriers on to be able to finish buildings and everything. We've got bare wood with projects that just haven't been completed. Rather than sending a notice to them saying you're in violation, we go communicate with them. And we, we try to discuss, hey, you know what? Maybe what, find out what the, what the root of the problem is. And a lot of it has been, we ran into financial issues with it. And so we kind of point them in a direction, well, if you put this weather barrier on, go that one extra step. We obtain a permit, get that weather barrier put on. That will help protect your wood for a little bit longer rather than leaving it in a bare state. So that's something that we are doing and it's really been working actually. So, ag exempt buildings. I was not, I was not very good at understanding ag exempt buildings, but after doing some research and talking to the team and different things, I definitely see the positivity in agricultural exempt buildings. There's different things that I think people might be taking it a step too far and utilizing a free permit for a man cave, different things like that. And really what we're trying to do with that is, you know, making sure that those safety issues are taken care of. If they're putting electrical in it, which would be allowed, but you just have to obtain a building permit to be able to do that electrical part of it. And we're understanding to that and we, we help educate them. But whenever we see a new building go up and we don't have a permit for it, then, then we go and we communicate with those property owners. And non-permitted excavations, wow, I've never seen so many. I'm, I'm not educated enough to be able to say, you know, why landslides happen or little slides happen. But I think anybody can tell, just with their own eyes, that there's been quite a few slides in this area. And taking the toe out of a hillside does not help. And when we do see excavation going on, whether it's private property or not, we, we check to make sure that they've obtained a permit to be able to make sure they've, they've done their geoscoping and everything else. To be able to be proficient, make sure they're proficient in knowing the actions that they're, they're making, you know, can be hazardous if it's not followed through. We just don't want any future slides and everything else to, to hurt anybody else. Cooperation with the clerk's office. We've been heavily involved with short-term rentals. We've been taking complaints from the public. We've been working on a relationship with one of the development teams in Mountain Green. They've been talking to their new owners to educate them about our ordinances to make sure they just don't think that they can run a short-term rental without a business license. And that's, that's really what that's about. And then business licensing, ensuring that all businesses have licenses. If, if one hasn't, renewed their business license, then they're forwarding it to us and we're able to communicate with them and find out if they went out of business or if they wanted to renew, they just forgot about it, which happens quite a bit. Cooperation with the assessor's office. We've been discussing on how to handle the deep creek assessments, deep creek canyon, I guess is what it is, and checking for illegal structures that might be up there. And then some of them are running businesses out of there, which we found evident. So it's something that we'll be discussing and educating those property owners on the ordinances. Code compliance cases so far, and I'll just briefly go through this. Abandoned vehicles, we've had six cases with one of them closed. Nuisance properties, seven cases. Weeds, two cases. Right-of-way violations, four cases, cases with two of them closed. Excavation, geotech violations, two cases. Excavation, geotech violations, two cases. Building permit violations, four cases with two of them closed. Conditional use permit violations, two. Living in trailers, five cases with two closed. Short term rentals, thirteen complaints. Commercial storage and residential, um, properties, one case. Ag exempt, three cases with two of them closed. Business license violations, three cases with one closed. And then dark sky violations, two cases with two of them closed. Ongoing code assessments, um, with, with our team and, um, working with the commission. Right now we have a short term rental discussion going on, Connex boxes going on. I've been asked to work with the legal team to talk about the penalty phase of, um, our different ordinances. And that's kind of where we're at with that. So questions, advice, I love it. I mean, it's, it's what we need to be able to make sure that we're doing what you want as well as, you know, understanding what the public might be, what you might be hearing from the public. That's very important for, for us to know. That way it helps, you know, the way that we approach things. Um, we're, we're very consistent. We treat people fair. But do you have any advice or questions for us?
Is that a question on the picture with the tires and I, they happen to have a silage pit close by or is this a guy with a whole bunch of tires in his backyard?
Just a whole bunch of tires in the backyard.
I know there's quite a few that, you know, the silage pits, they use them to cover them up during the, as they start to pack them and that. I just want to make sure that we're not, we see that and we understand that, okay, I can see what they're trying to, what they're doing here, that they're, they're gonna be on top of the pit all in along and then in the spring it's empty and they're all in a big file and you know, you see things like that. I mean, it's kind of like the ag exempt building. Like I didn't realize that that's a thing. And so, you know, you're coming into Morgan and that, I mean, as a new resident, that, as you start to see things, you know, I, I can appreciate going to talking to people and just, you know, it's an education on both sides. You know, this is why I have four hundred tires sitting next to my house. I've got three, three silage pits, you know, just things like that. But I do appreciate, I mean, people living in trailers, the one I saw down, down by the river. So I, yeah, that's kind of, you're starting to push the limits here. And you're seeing we're just dumping out. So I can appreciate the work and I do appreciate the, taking the time to educate people and talk to them and learn about what are they trying to do and.
Thank you.
Do we have an act exemption in the code for Quonset huts? No. Do you want a task staff to add that?
So a Quon, so we don't have anything for a Quonset hut?
Well, that's, that's what I call the silage pits. Just a temporary Quonset storage.
Silage pit is an open pit that they pack their chopped corn or whatever.
Right, but they wrap it and then they put tires on it.
Sometimes they do, yeah.
But it's not like, no, like a.
We don't have an, what I'm saying is we don't have an exemption for it.
That's an ag exemption. Should be.
For the tires, but we don't have, what I'm saying is we don't have one in the code.
Yeah, there's nothing in the code for a Quonset hut. Typically those aren't permanent structures.
A Quonset hut doesn't have anything to do with the silage pit.
Right, but the storage of the tires outside for a prolonged period of time would have to, they'd have to find some way to screen it. Otherwise it would be a violation just because it's outdoor storage.
Why, why would that have to be the case when we are an agricultural community? And if a farming operation has to use tires, why are we going to punish them if that is the case? I'm just saying if it is the case.
At some point, there might be a commission that's not ag based and that's why I'm asking if you want a task staff to put it in the code.
Do we put something there to protect those people that are doing it so that when they see it, they're like, oh, you know, like we go over to the dairy or we go over to Morgan's or where they're packing and they cover them up and they got a whole bunch of tires. I could see us wanting to.
He was saying none of, none of the properties that had the tires were related to.
No, and, and that's, and I can, but I'm just thinking, if you're driving around and you see it and then you're like, well, it is a violation because it's not in our code. Do we want to have something that does allow it for certain instances? I think it's worth.
Well, we can clarify it in the code with a text amendment if you want, but our process is not just to zing them and send them a letter. Our process is we start with communication first and that helps us, uh, you know, figure out what exactly is going on.
Well, I guess the one question is, is it something that we should maybe be a little preemptive saying that it is protected by our code that if you have a silage pit, that kind of thing, that, that will work, that's not. Does that make sense? Just trying to be preemptive for maybe a possible in ten years, you've got a commission. It's like, no, get rid of all the tires.
Um, if the commission wants to direct staff to put something like that in the code, then I will draft something.
So I'm no farmer, but is tires necessary for silage pits?
It's pretty much the cheapest.
They're not necessary.
Well, they are necessary unless you have enough weight or something else that's easily.
It's something that's cheap enough to hold them down versus.
And that's what it is for is, I mean, you'll put them right next to each other just so you can hold it down.
All these bags I see on my way to Lake Powell that are just big bags full of silage.
Kind. That's a different kind. That's a silage bag. Then there's also the silage pits. And the silage pits are the ones that the old time farmers, most of them still use because that is what they had. And that's what their facility is built as. And so, and there may be a case when one agriculture person may go and, and one year not use the silage pit because maybe the crops were bad or maybe they changed their operation. So those tires need to sit there for more than one year. But that's an agricultural operation.
The tires hold down a tarp, correct?
Correct.
So then during the summer, they could wrap the tires in the tarp and then you don't have the visual.
Too much heat. You're gonna have a fire. I don't want to do that in my place.
Anyways, I, I think, I mean, the, the tires are kind of the, they don't rot like a piece, if you were trying to lay wood on it, it's, you know, this is kind of a long term use. So they use them year after year. They don't deteriorate. And it's kind of, every farm's got old trucks and tractors and they use those tires. It's just something that's easy to come by.
But they could, they could stack them neatly and make it look.
Sure, they, they could, yes. I just don't want them having an abundance of tires, you know, do we do something preemptive so that they're not.
I think the point though is, is this is a text amendment that could come forward because, um, you know, where Chris is coming from and where Josh is coming from and, and where I'm coming from, because ultimately it ends up at me if it has to go, all that direction is, um, if we need to change the code, that's way better than ignoring it. And, and so, so if there is a text amendment that should come forward, that's a great thing that gives more direction. It allows the public to come in and speak through the legislative process and then it, it helps it um, for the enforcement to feel like, okay, we're enforcing what the commission and the community want and, and we're not enforcing things that you don't want. And so I think that's where Chris was asking for the feedback to say, if you're hearing things, that might necessitate a text amendment rather than a direction to ignore the code because that makes it really difficult from my office's perspective.
And I told him, I mean, if the guy's got a hundred tires sitting next to his house, it's like he's on an acre of ground, like he doesn't have silage. That's pretty obvious, but I, I think I would like to see something that, again, it protects the people that are using it for a legitimate purpose.
Chris needs to add one thing that he left out about why it's free for the tires to be dropped off at Public Works. So.
So GeoCycle, what they do is they burn, they burn shredded tires, um, for their, for their product. So. Liberty. So Liberty Tire, who provides that crushed up tires, um, they, they are the ones with GeoCycle that have given us that, um, dumpster. So that's a huge savings. Massive savings that I wish I could have got, gotten in Ogden. Um, but that wasn't possible. So, that's a pretty good kudos to them, uh, for helping us with that. But is there, is there anything else? I, I like the discussion there.
One other question I had is, is the majority of what you're doing, is it by referral or is it just driving around randomly?
So most of it has been by referral, except for the fact when, when there is a property that I, that we go to that has a complaint based issue there. I look around to make sure that everybody around them doesn't have the same thing. And if they do, then I have to write them up.
No, I just, I like to see the, the, the public input, people reaching out. I, I like to see that, you know, because I mean, I don't think any of us want to see a garbage pile next to our homes. You know, we want it to look nice.
It's no different than I, I don't like to look out my second story window and look out after an uncovered boat and a collapsing shed and, you know, everything else that, that's there, right? So it's, yeah. And please, there's, there's a, I, I love the open door policy. Um, I love the discussions. And I will say what Josh said, we don't just send a letter. We, we like to go up and communicate with people. The only time that we will not be going up and communicating with them is if they've already issued a threat out. And we hope that nobody feels like they have to issue a threat or anything else. Um, we would just like them to communicate. We can do it onsite or they can, you know, come in, come into the building, but we like to provide that opportunity to education rather than make it a fear based program. We really want that to happen and, and please feel free to, you know, offer that out. So.
So on your ag exempt buildings, are you, are you actually enforcing that they are ag or not?
That is, that is a discussion that I'm gonna let Josh answer, but, but that is, it's.
Because one of the pictures in there I know is not ag.
Yeah, we have done our best to enforce that. Uh, whenever I either hear of or see, uh, an ag exempt barn being used for something other than ag, such as a human habitation where they've built a necessary structure. Or they're putting in their boats or recreational vehicles, things like that. All of that violates the ag exemption. Uh, which means that they would have to come back, fill out a building permit, submit plans for the building that they constructed and prove to our building official that they have, uh, met the IBC standards. Um, and, and then that would also inst- uh, instigate the, the double fee at that point. So hopefully people aren't just saying it's ag exempt because, um, it can get expensive.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Did, uh, did we want to ask staff to do anything on that?
I mean, I, I think anything that's agricultural related, maybe we ought to look at if there are things that are of concern. I mean, I'm sure it's more than just a silage pit. That was kind of the discussion, but I'm sure there are other things that have come up that maybe, maybe it's more, you tell us where you need clarification of, of what the county, you know, wants to enforce and doesn't want to and go from there.
Yeah, we're not trying to cost our farmers a lot of money or do anything like that, but, but. I'm a little OCD too and I'd, I'd like things straight. They seem to be able to get the tires straight on their stuff. So I think they can stack them too.
When did that help? If they had a storage container, they could put the tires inside it.
That's right. If they could get a storage container.
Yeah.
We'll put, we'll put electrical in it. We'll put fans.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our action items. Sandy, are you here to be one of the cheerleaders? Uh, I don't see any cheerleaders. Does anybody, anybody want to be a cheerleader?
I'll just make a motion on this one though.
Yeah, we do it every year. So. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Newton.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, sponsorship of the MHS Cheerleaders with their Flag Service Project. Took place. I don't remember how many flags we did in the past. Oh, okay. So for, for twelve flags, thirty-five dollars apiece for a total of four hundred and twenty dollars. That funding to come from the non departmental ten dash forty-one fifty dash three forty.
Didn't we put that into a budget this year? Cause I think we put something.
We left it non departmental.
Did we? Okay. I just know we had discussed it.
Do you have a motion? Motion from President, or from Commissioner Newton? And a second from Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the donation of funds for the, uh, Morgan Lyons Club Easter, Community Easter Egg Hunt. Same as last year, the amount of five hundred dollars also to come from the non departmental ten dash forty-one fifty dash three forty.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Brett.
Uh, Commissioners, I forgot. I, I was looking at the packet earlier and I noticed that I did not scan those fund balances to you. So I sent them to you earlier today and I put a copy on your desks.
We took two weeks to find another million dollars. I heard. We can fix some roads, I think, Commissioners.
So Vaughn and Blaine and I met with Brett last, this week, last week?
Last week.
And, and we did identify some, or I'm sorry, not with Brett. We met with Leslie to talk about fund balances. That is what's on in front of you. Um, so if we look at the three items you did not approve in last commission meeting that were tabled to this commission meeting. The discussion was to not do one of those three to approve it if we're, if you're wanting to transfer money out of fund balance to approve the other two. Because we can apply for the state, state park access grant, um, for those funds. Which leaves the other two, which one was the state park access? Was it this one up here right now? Croydon seven thousand east?
It's the top one there.
Okay. So the two hundred and thirty-two, four fifty-four, forty-four estimate?
The seven thousand east of the new pavement isn't, that's the lower one.
Is that lower?
It's a two thirty-five. It's two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
It was the other one. It's sixty-nine hundred east.
That's the, the two sixty-two, two sixty-two, one sixty-six. That's the one where, that's, that's the park access.
Right. Okay. The sixty-nine, yeah, the Croydon sixty-nine hundred east to.
Okay, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one sixty-six, sixty-seven. That's, so Croydon sixty-nine hundred east. That's the one I'm gonna apply in when the funds open up after the next, um, state fiscal year, so one July for the state park access grant on those. But they did talk about, um, so you have two left. So the one that's up on the screen right now, two sixty-two, one sixty-six, sixty-seven. And then the last one being the three hundred and twenty-eight, three twenty-eight.
And then, and then on this, if you look back the one, two weeks ago, my estimate just changed a little bit, but it does that one.
Did it go up or down?
It went up just a little bit, not a lot.
For the one that we moved.
So it went to three thirty-six and two sixty-five. Three thousand, three thousand on one. And, uh, yeah, three thousand on the other.
Oh, you're talking about these? These three, the amounts went up?
Yeah, yeah, just three thousand apiece.
They went up about three K apiece. Okay. But not the ones we pre-approved or approved last?
What happened to them? Why did they go up?
Just my estimates on going, when, when I get prices, those things, things go up during the winter. That's why I can't do these. I mean, I can't really put my, uh, road projects last Sep- or, you know, clear back in September. We work on it during the winter with our contractors to see what the price is gonna be because things change all the time.
Just as a, another thought for you when you're doing your evaluation prioritization process. Where it says the project has a revenue stream to cover maintenance and operation expenses. Yes, and you put B and C funds, it's, it's not necessarily from that. It could come from those other funds too.
It could, but if we're just doing maintenance, it'd probably come from B and C.
Right. And then you say you're gonna be constructing the highway, not just overlaying the highway or the road?
No, we are overlaying it.
That's what I thought. So, just in your terminology and those.
Constructing an overlay, how's that?
It's not a construction because if it's a construction, you gotta add on trail.
You gotta add a trail.
You gotta add trails to construction.
Hey, we're getting better at that.
Yes, we are getting better.
Do they really, do they really on a three hundred thousand dollar project come back and say, I need another three grand?
Well.
That just seems really bizarre to me.
Well, they're not coming back. This is just our estimate because this, this is just an estimate. I don't know what the quantities are gonna take. You know what I mean? So, so what we do, Commissioner, uh, we approve this and I go pave a certain road and I say it's gonna take, it's gonna cost two hundred and sixty-five thousand. I've got a quantity. it's gonna cost two hundred and sixty-five thousand. I've got a quantity on tonnage of asphalt. I try to keep that as close as I can. That's, I doubt I'm gonna get right close to that. You know what I mean? I'm gonna be off just a little bit.
Oh, I just didn't know how you came up with another three grand from.
Just quantities. Just, just quantities. Prices of the oil, you know what I mean, go up and, they never go down, let's say. They always go up. Even though, even though your prices at the pump go down. I haven't seen oil go down when it comes to asphalt oil. Maybe in the future.
It's so, it's just asphalt that they have locked in on a price, you're saying?
It's just quantities. I mean, you know, that's why I stress this is an estimate and I'll keep it pretty close. And I'll give you an example on Old Highway. We, it was really a job to keep track of Old Highway to make the money go as far as we can and as far as we can down the road, you know what I mean? And not go over, cause everything we went over, we had to pay a hundred percent on that, on that job, so. So it's a job to do that. You don't know what the road's gonna take exactly when you've got dips in the road. Or wider in places.
So my, my, my advice, or how you wanna take it, if you're gonna go over on the project too much more than what we've got here, we may not be able to fund the other one. I'm not saying we can't.
That's why I.
That's how much we have available within those funds. Um, you know, of that ongoing sales tax money. But if you go over it, you're gonna be taken out of your budget, and if you go over your budget, we're not happy.
Right. Believe me, I know about that.
There is some contingency fund, though, in the B and C fund balance. We keep two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for.
I'll give you a good example. If you go, go drive the cutoff road, you'll see where my new pavement stops just before it gets to there, to the, to the Croydon, the, the Lost Creek Road. I ran out of money. And I knew it. I, I knew exactly where I could go by keeping track of the quantities day to day. So, so we, we keep that pretty close. We've really been pretty good at that. Um, I've had to cut roads out. You know what I mean? I've, you approved a road and I've had to cut one out at the end. Couldn't afford it, so. So that happens. It depends on quantities.
Brett, can you, I'm confused by these addresses on these two ones. This one that says that we're looking at the Croydon seven thousand east to New Pavement, is that the upper section from where the roads converge up around the corner?
Yeah, so she, yeah, what she wants to put in for is, is going past your house, basically.
Can we put in for that since we, we, we call the back road the, the access to the State Park, not the front road?
I think we can still put in for it because people come and use that road on your east access, so we got two accesses there. I don't, I, I don't think we have an official access going to Lost Creek. Does that make sense?
I mean, this stretch is, is the only access. Once the roads converge, I just wanna make sure we don't get ourselves in a tight spot by saying we've got two different accesses.
And we can look at that closer when she puts in, but um, but we do have two accesses going there.
I mean, our, our access road, as far as I know, was when we put in that road a few years ago.
The back road. That's the cutoff road. And that's why I'm saying, so if we could pull up a map, this top one that we're looking at is from where the two roads come back together, the cutoff road and the.
By the park there. By the park and going.
Right above Wilds.
Going north, yeah.
And it's from there up until you get to where the, that S curve is, where the new, it's, it's from Crouch's up.
Crouch is to the, that's where we're at.
That's what this one is. The other one.
Thank you, Jeremy.
The other one's tying those, those two spots in.
Is from the park to that point, basically, right? Um, but my concern is, if we've said that the access to the State Park is the cutoff road, I'm not sure that we can then go back to the state and say, hey, we want money for an access road on the other side of the valley, if that makes sense. I think that we can from that point up, right? Cause that's the only access.
How many people come from the east, Mike, do you think, that come in the, because they're not.
I mean, we do get people, we do get people using both roads, but the signage indicates that they should be going on the back road.
Yeah.
So.
Either way, we need to pave in between and get the rest of it done, so we've got that thing.
The second one here that you have with this first one on here, that, the sixty-nine hundred.
That's from the park to Crouch's essentially. But on the front side, not the back road.
So really, we should be applying for the seven thousand east.
I think we should, although it's, it's the lesser amount, but.
Is there a reason we couldn't apply for both?
Well, we can't do all three.
Well, not all three, but.
We can apply for the grant for both of those sections.
Sixty-nine hundred and seven thousand.
Well, other than if.
And if we don't get approved, we can come, we have money in the.
Redo the back road as our access, so I don't know if they're gonna look at it and say, well, you can't have both.
And they gave us that money when they made it a state park that same year. Well, I guess the next, there's a fiscal year on there. It was the next year for us.
But there's no question that from seven thousand at least, that that would be.
Yeah, there's no question. So if you.
From, from Crouch's to the rest.
If you scroll up there, Jeremy. Keep going. Okay, from right there where that, those two roads come together, where it says twenty-nine seventy-seven, it's from there up is this, this top one, the two hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then the other one, the two hundred and sixty-two thousand would be from there down to the park.
So this is the one I was thinking of for the one project, one project, and we could prob- we could get money for that. Should be.
You're saying this upper stretch?
Yes, the upper stretch, not the lower.
That's what I was thinking too.
So, so which one, this lower one then, the two hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Goes from the Y back to the park.
Go back to park. That one.
That's the one that I think that we ought to pay for from this, and the other one I think we ought to apply for, but that's just.
I agree.
I don't think there's any question.
Yeah, no question at all.
Cause there won't be any, I'd hate for us to put both of them on hold too and then not get anything, cause we applied for the wrong one.
Kay, what is the timeframe on that? If you do get it, do you?
I don't know, cause I've never applied for it before. We.
Just curious.
We just legislatively got eligible to apply for.
Next year's money, I would guess, at the earliest.
Right.
They're within thirty thousand dollars of each other too, so I, you know what I mean? It's not like one's way more expensive than the other.
Yeah, that's what.
If we don't get it this year.
So based on the list we had last, last session, what are, what's our ask?
So my suggestion would be we apply for the grant for the, the seven thousand east one, the top one here. And then we can pay for the sixty-nine hundred east and the Lost Creek, not Lost Creek, sorry, Deep Creek project from, from these funds.
So the only question I had on Deep Creek is if I remember in our conversation, you said, Deep Creek should be widened if we're gonna do it, which is gonna be way more than what we're seeing right here. This is just a place to be overweight.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, it will get a little bit wider because we use the whole road, so it'll, it'll feel wider, but it's not gonna be county spec. It's gonna be like, um, like the cutoff road. It's gonna be.
I just remember you were saying that it should be widened, which now we gotta ditch on both sides of the road. And it's, you got people up there that are like, no, we own the road and this and that, whatever.
And that's something we've gotta get clear.
And that's something that, I think we better get that figured out before we.
Well, it, it does fall in because this already went. It's actually been regated a little bit. Remember, Mike, when you were here? Um, it's a prescriptive right-of-way. So the county's been taking, or they've been taking care of it. School buses have been going up there since nineteen eighty.
Right.
So if you, if, so if you take care of it for ten years, then it becomes a prescriptive right-of-way and the county.
So are we getting B and C funds for that road?
Yes. It's on the list and has been for. Same with the cutoff road, we're getting B and C funds on that.
Yeah, and we, we kinda had the same discussion on the cutoff road in Croydon, in that fence lines are pretty close to the road and actually widen it to full county spec, which by the way, even Old Highway and Morgan Valley Drive are not fully the county spec the entire length, and there's places where.
You get spots down there, yeah. Most of it is.
By the time you go through the process of trying to acquire the land and all, I mean, it could be years down the road.
Right.
My suggestion would be repave it, overlay it the way it is. And we can work on that over time to acquire that, but I wouldn't wait to do it, cause the road's gonna fall apart to the point where it's gonna cost us way more to.
I was just making sure, cause in our last conversation, it was like, it really should be, and this should be done, it was like.
Yeah. That's the proper way. I mean, it's a, it's a non-conforming. It's a non-conforming road.
I think that's what we ought to do for the time being. Now, I know there were some residents that, that wanted to talk about widening it and stuff, and I think if that's the case, you know, they need to also be willing to come in and work with us on the land and the ditches and everything else, and that's fine, you know, let's do that.
Yeah, Deep Creek's kind of its own.
You wait, you're gonna end up with a, with a bigger problem, cause that road will fall completely apart. And there's, and it's in bad shape in some spots.
What's gonna happen now, it, it's gonna, once we get done, it's gonna seem wider. It, or it, it is gonna be wider, cause you can use the shoulder. There's spots where you just flat can't use the shoulder. You've got to go to the center, right? And there's gonna be, the, the residents complaining how fast we're going. We're gonna have to put signs up there. We're gonna have to put a twenty mile an hour signs up. And then I'm gonna put a mirror up on that first corner, so they can see people come, and then put uh, narrow, you know, narrow road. Cause it's still gonna be a non-conforming narrow road, even though I think you can pass a lot of places, but we'll do that once we get it fixed up. So I think it'll, it'll make it a safer road. At least we're, at least we're improving and making it safer.
You know, it's the people who realize that live on that road, and I don't know if you wanna send them a letter or what. But they're paying taxes on that. I mean, that property, if it's theirs, and the deed says it's theirs, then they can either continue to pay paraprendy taxes on it or deed it over.
It's the same thing.
We have that all over the county. I mean, I paved it in the middle of the road in front of my house. It's just, cause it's been that way and I've never taken it out.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying that is just an option for somebody if they would like to. Cause they could go and deed that back to the county, and then they can quit paying taxes on it.
So if the commission is interested in funding the two projects, not the one I'm applying for the grant, you have two fiscal options from these fund balances, which is only going to be fund eighteen and seventeen. So you could fund the smaller project out of fund seventeen, which would leave a balance in your fund balance of forty-six thousand, one ninety-two. Or you can fund both of them out of fund eighteen with the remaining un, but um, budget balance of one forty-two, three sixty-three that we've already budgeted but haven't committed, plus these two projects.
Which.
You're, you're still looking at the wrong smaller project. It's the two sixty-two, not the two thirty-three.
Yeah, it's the two sixty-two, it's five.
Two, I'm sorry, two sixty-two?
One sixty-six, sixty-seven.
One sixty-six.
He asked to have it increased by three thousand.
Okay. So, so you could still take it out of fund seventeen. You're gonna drop, obviously, your fund balance on that down to twenty-six thousand dollars. If you do that one out of seventeen, you can pull them both out of fund eighteen fund balance, two sixty-two, four sixty-six, forty-four, plus six thousand dollar budgeted increase.
Seven thousand, one thousand dollars is what I have for the two, so to get.
Two sixty-two. All right. And you still have one forty-two, three sixty-three budgeted but unspent. And then on the fund balance of five forty-six, six forty. So you'd, well, if you pay for both of them out of fund eighteen, you would leave a fund balance in eighteen of ninety-two thousand in that fund balance, and then the two eighty-one, six forty-six would stay as a fund balance of seventeen. So it's just up to you if you wanna split them, or if you wanna.
I don't think it matters.
Pay for them both.
It doesn't matter, so.
Take them both out of the eighteen and we'll leave the ninety-some odd thousand in the fund balance.
That's what I would do. Yeah, take it all out, but you're including this year's revenue that we've already received.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. I would say take it all out of eighteen.
Eighteen. Just made a motion.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the expenditure from fund eighteen in the amount of, this will be both from fund balance and from.
Well, it's not, it's from the balance that is in that fund.
Correct. So the fund balance transfer would be four hundred and fifty-four thousand, four twenty-five.
Four hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five. It's a fund balance transfer, cause we have to transfer it from the savings to the checking. And then we're gonna pay for both of these projects. The Croydon sixty-nine hundred east project, the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand? Two, sorry, two sixty-five and change, and the Deep Creek project in the amount of three twenty, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change.
I know. Plus three. Three thirty-six is what you'd ask for just now.
I'm sorry, three thirty-one.
And change.
And change.
Do you have a motion?
And that's all out of fund eighteen?
Correct, fund balances.
Have a motion from Commissioner Newton and a second from Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
Say yes.
Got that, Leslie? Okay.
I got it. Leslie, I'll do your budget adjustment. And then I'll um, get with you to apply on that grant when they open the grant. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Brett. We'll get busy. Okay, act, action item number F four.
Don't forget your crotch, Brett.
We have a quartet.
Doing good.
Vicky Benson, Sandy Johansson, Tom Johansson, and Val Paul. Are you all coming forward or just? Just, just the roses, not the thorns.
Well, we appreciate you guys.
We appreciate you guys inviting us to listen in tonight and your willingness to still address and talk about this issue. Um, as far as what we have to offer, I do, I don't know if you wanna ask us questions or what we specifically have knowledge wise to share with you. As we told you before, our cemetery is at capacity. With no option to expand it at the moment. But we wanna work with the county and offer our limited knowledge that we have and whatever we can do to help the county figure out the next step.
So what's your proposal to us?
If this is something Matt asked to be on the agenda.
So, so we, we've been talking to several people as we've been approving, getting things approved to try and get land, cause that's our most difficult thing. Um, and we have had some people that, that uh, are interested in helping with that. It just depends on exactly how we go about doing it with, with the limited resources that we have right there, you know? I don't know if the Pauls have a bunch of land that they.
You know, at our last time, we discussed um, different options, and one that was mentioned was an impact fee. So I did do a little bit of research um, on the state code for impact fees. And I, of course, I'm not a lawyer, but I ca- the gist of it, kind of, and I, I sent the code to Kate just for easy reference, but if a development, um, because of that development, we have needs that are developed, which because of, say, more rooftops or such, uh, that we, it is possible to apply an impact, impact fee to that development to meet the need that was caused by that development. So I don't know if we could somehow say the amount we need for burials for all these rooftops going in with.
So I, I would tell you what, our, our biggest ask from you would be is if you could find a piece of land that, that, because I don't think as a county, we wanna be necessarily in the cemetery business.
And no one does.
No, no one does. Not even the church. They, they, they would like to give it to us too. But the, but land is, is the issue unless we start stacking people and.
Well, if you have a flat piece of property, you could probably do that. But where we, we are not, um, being on that hill and with all the gravel that our county so readily has, um, it, it's just not possible. If we had a place that was flat, then, then that would be an option is to double.
Really?
Especially if you go in, they're, if they're pre-sold, you could go in and put the vaults in just like um, Lindquist has in their latent cemetery. You can put those in and have them pre-done, and that makes it much easier.
I see what you're saying. It's more a, a double monument where a husband and wife are stacked.
Has anybody reached out to like Larkin or these other places? Cause usually, I mean, you go down below and majority of our cemeteries are owned by the church.
Right. They're private.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're private.
There's very few publicly owned cemeteries. So has anybody reached out to anybody like willing to partner up and?
I believe um, about five, six years ago, um, the church did reach out to some of the private, like Lindquist and Levitt's, and they were not interested at that time.
I mean, I mean, thinking about that, I can see they're just gonna take over, they don't wanna purchase something that's full. It's like there's, there's no, they're not gonna make any money on it, cause it's full. But if we're looking at a brand new cemetery, maybe there's a piece of ground that they would be interested in, because now they have the opportunity to develop the entire cemetery, not just take over a full cemetery. If that makes sense. develop the entire cemetery, not just take over a full cemetery. If that makes sense.
As far as Mount Green Cemetery, as far, as far as Mount Green Cemetery where it stands today, I think we are just committed to service what we've been able to sell and provide that burial service, but as far as expanding or having any other resources, it's kind of just a meet the need now.
If I understand you're, it's pretty much sold out, right?
It is sold out.
So, so basically, those that have plots, you're gonna continue that, and then it's just a maintenance issue after that. And that's where I'm, I'm thinking, it's like, if we reach out, like, is there a piece of ground? We, we have Mountain Green Cemetery two point oh, you know?
Right.
Again, privately owned, and I don't know, that, that's just kind of.
That's what I was thinking. When I started doing the math on a small square footage of, of land, it's actually pretty lucrative to, to sell a plot. Unless you can tell me differently, where you've done the books.
There's no money-making on our end. There hasn't been. Everything has been tried to be self-sustaining, because perpetual care is just that. You've got to take care of it for forever. So that amount of money, I don't think people have that kind of money to pay for that, and I'm sure the way that they're taking care of it as far as the private individual, or the private cemeteries, is that they sell the life insurance policies and things that go along with that, and then recoup their money with interest and things like that. But we've never done that. Ours has always been, yeah, ours has always been pay for the need and.
And what have you charged? What have you been charging?
Um, more recently, uh, the last ones that we've had were a thousand dollars for in-county, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars for out of county.
Oh, that's cheap.
And, and that's by what Morgan standard is, because that's why we went to that price, is because that's what they were charging up here.
And another thing I don't think people realize is they're not actually buying the property. They're only buying the right to be buried there. So people are buying, people, I think, sometimes think they're buying the plot so that they can use it as an investment and sell it down the road for three times what they paid for it, but in our cemetery, that's not the case. They're not actually buying the property. They're just buying the right to be buried there.
I know, in Milton, they're doing kind of the same thing. It's, they've really restricted who they'll sell to, you know, because they want you to be, there's not that much space, and so it's, you must have lived in Milton, they, and they're now enforcing that, and because again, we, we watched in Milton, we're watching what happened in Mountain Green. It's like, okay, we need to learn from their sound. Everybody's like, well, we're gonna, we're gonna tighten that up a bit. I mean, it's, it's an issue, and it's a need that you have over in Green.
So maybe what we can do, go ahead.
I, I don't think the church is interested in expanding. Uh, and I think for you guys, there's just going to be a need. The plots are sold out. There's going to be a need for more cemetery space. And I think what we'd like to do is preserve the access, make, make sure you're aware that, you know, the access is needed. It's prescriptive, at least the cemetery traffic should be updated. So as things develop there, as you guys review that, we want to make, make sure that we maintain that or affect that as, as you, or plots were provided. And that, uh, if there's an opportunity to improve our plot life, parking up there, or something like that, we can actually do it. I think the church looks at this as, you know, something that will fill up and then line down, and then just take care of it forever. As the county wants to take it. We would sign over our.
Sandy would sign over the city's account right now.
But I, this is Commissioner Blocker. So the Mountain Green Cemetery, it's a beautiful cemetery. You guys have done such a great job maintaining it. I know it's important to a lot of people in the Mountain Green area. There's a lot of history there, a lot of ancestors buried there, um, close to unmarked Native American graves. We would love talking to certain individuals to expand it if we could. Um, we're trying to, you know, we've asked developers that have that land to consider that. I know that the county, actually, some of the county, um, Oldville, they created a cemetery maintenance district, which helps, you know, maintain the cemetery and take care of that area, provide a most natural possibility. Also, is there, have you looked into, or is there any room, like, to build a, is it a mausoleum, like, like, my sister's buried above ground? Like a wall structure? Has that been looked into at all?
No, but we have talked about possibly doing something for cremations, because that is some, a way that a lot of people are going because of the cost. So we, we've talked about it briefly, but we haven't looked into the cost or anything else about that. So my concern is, is that as a county, forward-thinking, we, we've got to have some places, like we've talked about. We have our parks, we have our churches. Death is inevitable. It comes to everybody, and we need to have places that are set aside or purchased, or whatever we need to do for this, before it becomes, well, I don't know where to put it. We'll stick it on that hill. I could tell you, having a cemetery on a hill is not an easy thing, not an easy thing to measure, not an easy thing to dig. So just, just, I'd love to see the, the county look forward and say, okay, we're gonna start a cemetery or a, a fund that goes just for that at some point. So.
Well, and it's, it's not a lift for one group. It's a combination lift. And so from, you know, the current cemeteries, the developers, the county, if everybody lifts a little bit, then the end product can, you know, not be something that's going to be a burden to anyone. And so you know, from the county's perspective, if they can look at this and say, you know, if there are some requirements in that town center that could be, you know, if there's a commercial, uh, use requirement that's there, and, you know, the expansion, whether it's for parking or whatever, of the Mountain Green Cemetery could be, you know, a commercial use, so it could fulfill that requirement, then that would be, you know, something from the county that could be, you know, their, their portion of the lift, still allow those who are going to maintain it. It's great. That, that will take care of the one there, but still doesn't change the capacity very much. So, you know, if there's other things that can be done from a some type of an incentive from a property owner to say, you know what, we could look to this, whether it's a cemetery, cemetery district or whatever, that's probably something that, it's in your tool belt to be able to make some adjustments or be creative that way. So if land's found, then there could be, you know, something done with that. You know, some of the land that's down there is, you know, the, the water table's two and a half feet down when it's down on the low stuff, and so that's, that's just not an option. So it has to be in just the right spot. So I think that's what the county has the ability to do, is from a zoning or compliance from some of those new developments, maybe you can look at that way and see how you can sweeten the pot to make that work better. Does that make sense?
So one note I'll.
I have.
Oh, sorry.
I have one other question, um, and you probably don't know the answer to this, but the church owns a bunch of land behind the stake center. Would they be willing to donate some acres for a new cemetery?
You have to ask the church.
The, the question is who are they gonna donate it to? If the county's not in the cemetery business, somebody's gonna have to take that responsibility on.
Right, the county would have to take it.
Oh, excuse me, sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, just from our perspective, that what the troubles we've had with the Cape, the church ownership of this is they don't want to be in the cemetery, just like the county doesn't want to be in the cemetery. And they're not obligated to provide for citizens and rooftops, people that are moving in, and so once this cemetery is taken care of and done, you kind of get the impression that they're just gonna, you know, they don't want to be involved. So I don't see them necessarily donating or laying out for that cemetery.
Well, that may be something back to if the church or a developer's willing to sell the property to a mortuary. Because like I said, I don't think anybody's really wanting us to take over the cemetery and run that. But if a, if a, if a developer or somebody is wanting, willing to sell property that is conducive to a cemetery, maybe Larkin, or I don't know if Walkers wants to get into the cemetery business, but I think they just want to be a mortuary. I don't know. I can't speak with them, but I think that's kind of the direction I'm looking, is that have private industry step in. You know, if the church is willing to sell it or re, at a, because really, nobody's gonna make a lot of money. You're not gonna subdivide a cemetery into lots. I mean, you are, but you're not. They're, they're doing it, you know, they're gonna say, hey, we'll give you a good price, because if it's a cemetery, it's a good use. Larkin can come in or whoever, and they can start, they can set it up there. I, I think that's the direction I'm more inclined to, to look at is that private industry, so that, because we want it well-maintained. We want it taken care of. It's a place that people should be able to go and, you know, visit their relatives and, and have peace and tranquility. I mean, I go up to the Milton Cemetery and it's middle of summer, it's brown. There is no water, there never will be. It's a pioneer cemetery. It's what it is. And.
So what about that swamp ground that, uh, and you could stack people? I mean, above ground.
So we're, we're just here to give you information. We're not here to say, and, uh, the county's got it. We're just, so if you do get a development and say, hey, maybe to do your development, we want you to set aside this chunk of ground for like a park, or the skateboard thing, or whatever you do with, however you do that, or the big sidewalk, and anyway, then you guys, not us, could say, hey, walkers, or Larkin, or Lindquist, or Levitts, we got this chunk of ground that we've set aside from this development. Would you like to buy it from the county? We're not here trying to say, hey, you gotta do this. We're just giving you some information that we're, all of those are full. All these cemeteries are full. So we're just trying to help, being concerned citizens.
I, I have a question, not necessarily for them, but for us. You know, and they bring up a good point to us. I mean, we don't want to be in the cemetery business. I agree. But we are growing, and we should be looking into a future of what we want. Do we want to send people dead or alive outside of this valley? Or do we want them to be allowed to be in the valley and have a place where they can be buried? Whether it's on top of each other or side by side, or however, I think we as a commission ought to be looking at potential ground to purchase, or to, as they say, as a developer, would you be willing to maybe for an extra two homes or extra two lots, would you mind giving up some of this for a cemetery? And then the residents, or however we have to do it, maybe we could talk to the city and see how they've done it. Because they're still in the business, thank goodness, for all of us that don't. Well, I've got a spot. But for a lot of them that need a spot or would like a spot, and I know, you know, down in the there are certain laws that you can do if you wanted to put your, your own burial on your own property, but that's a bigger project than and Garrett could talk to that. But there are some laws that allow that to be done. I don't, that would be also hard.
It seems like it might hurt your resale value in the neighborhood.
What's that?
Might hurt your resale value in your neighborhood.
That's true. It might. It might, but then again, I don't plan on leaving.
I, I appreciate you catching the. I appreciate you catching the vision. In our mind, it, it really is like Tom said, it's an informational thing. There's an issue in the county. You guys are doing the regional planning for the whole county, your planning commission, you guys, as you, and I think there are probably ways to incentivize this, and for the county to contact some of these private mortuaries and say, what would it look like for, for you to be enticed enough to come here and do your thing in Morgan County, because we have a need? And then as you develop your plans, and you, and you use the carrot and the stick all the time on these developers, then maybe there is something that you can put in place in your code, in your planning documents, that would incentivize that area to be set aside and maybe sweeten the pot, because, I mean, you're, we're looking out for the needs of, we're looking out for the what we have right now under our stewardship, which is this little cemetery. But we're indicating that there's a bigger problem, and you guys are looking out for the whole county, saying, well, this is something that should be provided here.
I've got, Josh, I, I'm a little difficult, me going through our code. What do zones allow for cemetery? Do you have, do you have that? You should have that right on top of your head, don't you?
I think they're permitted in all zones, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'd consider them a public quasi-public, um, use.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they were restricted to certain areas or things like that. I was trying to find it.
Haven't seen anything in our code that would restrict where we go.
I thought there was a state code.
I don't know about state code.
They're, they're really good neighbors, yes. The ones behind me don't bother me at all, you know?
So there, there was some discussion about a district, and I just wanted to make mention that a district can be created. It could be created in a certain area, or it could be a countywide or whatever, um, a cemetery maintenance district. That actually is initiated by the public. It's not initiated by the government body. So members of the public would sign a petition saying that they want to establish a district. Then you have to go out and do the signature gathering process. You have to gather, I believe it's thirty-three percent of the numbered of, of voters in that district in the last election. And then you bring that in and say to the county commission, Kay, we want you to help us establish a district, and it could be created that way. So.
Jeremy actually found it. There is a cemetery thing in the code. Yeah, it's C-three. I didn't remember that. Um, they're not allowed in M U one sixty, F one eight twenty, R ten, R five, and R one.
Yeah, forest?
Well, if you go to the, like I said, I would consider them a public quasi-public. If you go to, uh, the commercial, uh, zones, they're, they'd be allowed. I don't know if it's outright permitted, or can you go to the commercial?
Guess we'd have to change the code then of private cemetery.
Uh, that's not, that's not true. If you could go to the commercial section. Oh, okay, so this is the commercial section, but go down to public quasi-public as well. Because I, I would consider public quasi-public. So we could delete that out if you want.
I think there's also some confusion perhaps in what's considered private and what's considered public in this case. I think the intent of the code is to limit people from burying grandma in the backyard, so to speak. And that's what it's talking about in terms of private, meaning like a private family, individual plot. Whereas although these cemeteries in the county are owned, and in fact, some of them are kind of half-private owned, half-public owned. I mean, for example, the cemetery in Croydon is deeded to the people of Croydon, which doesn't exist legally as an entity. There are people that live in Croydon, but we got forty acres up there of cemetery, by the way. You can ship some folks up there. And only about four acres that are actually being used. But it's technically public, because it's been deeded to the public. The problem is the public entity that it was deeded to doesn't exist as an entity, right? And I, we probably have similar situations with several of our other cemeteries. The Mountain Green Cemetery is a little unique in that you have a church that owns it, but but the truth is, I don't think it was ever meant to even be under church ownership. It was, it was meant to be public, and the church ended up with it, because there wasn't a public entity that took it. My suspicion was, is, is it was probably to the people of Mountain Green as well at some point, and that doesn't exist either as a legal entity.
Thank you. Did you want? We have been, we have been putting pressure. One of the guys sitting right behind you, you can put a little more pressure on him.
Is that something that we need to clarify in our code as far as what is.
Ten acres or twenty acres as, as a cemetery?
When it comes to the public-private cemetery.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we need to correct that, Josh. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should.
I think we should, because otherwise, how are we gonna incentivize a mortuary to come and put in a.
And that's my thing, is let's have something in there, so it's like, no, you can do this, and let's make it easy and.
It's not like a park where you, all you do is maintain it, and you don't make any money off of it. You're gonna sell plot, you know, the, the county did actually have it. You are gonna sell plots. it, you are going to sell plots, there's an opening and closing that pay for all that work, and basically all you're doing is paying for maintenance for five months out of the year, and you're making all that money by selling those plots, so it generates enough money, and if it's invested wisely, it'll be able to maintain it, so I know it's, you know, it's a little bit different than just, oh, we're, that's going to be a lot of work, but you got all of the public work guys anyway that were here, one of those guys run over there and digs a grave in twenty minutes, and you have the truck, you have sand, and, you know what I mean, you have everything at your disposal, but there is a way for you to actually pay for it without losing, the county just losing tons of money, that's not, you know, that's not the whole thing, we're just trying to help, hey, there's going to be a situation in the county, and try to have our glasses on and see what we can do about it, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think we ought to be looking at something.
Do we want to direct staff to-
To change that code.
Maybe clarify public, private, and then look at our code as far as where we can facilitate some cemeteries, like what would be, uh, whatever zones, whatever.
We're going to leave that up to him.
Right, thanks, Josh.
Okay, before we go into, uh, public hearing stuff, we're going to take a little break.
Recession.
Recession.
Go ahead and recess.
I know, we're getting close.
Close to what, halfway?
I keep your fig Newtons in my office.
I don't even remember what it was, it just had some apple or something.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
I wasn't ready for that statement. You've been having a criminal life, haven't you?
I'm fine.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Go home, be with your family. Okay, Josh Cook. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to the members of the County Commission. Action item F six on your agenda for tonight is the Shopping Center Amendment. This is an amendment to the sign code, rather, actually puts a definition into one fifty-five point zero zero eight of the code. A few months ago, the members of the County Commission who have the planning portfolio within their assignment were, met with the Planning Director, Josh Cook, and had a meeting about how currently the code, the county code restricts certain types of signage, and the zoning administrator has been going along with an interpretation that doesn't allow for freestanding signs within planned centers. The short text of this amendment has been drafted by the county staff to clarify the interpretation and reinforce the current interpretation from the zoning administrator. Shopping center would be defined as commercial developments, including entire commercial subdivisions, strip malls, strip developments, multi-lot or multi-tenant developments. And the purpose of this, of the amendment for you tonight, Mr. Chair, is to help to reduce visual clutter from signage throughout the county and to limit the number of signs and to maintain civic beauty among our more commercial areas. Adding this definition will, again, align with the existing interpretation and provide clear guidance to county staff moving forward. The Planning Commission heard, or the Planning Commission heard this item on their regularly scheduled meeting on March twenty-seventh. The opportunity for the public to comment during a public hearing was open, and no comments were made during that time. Discussion from the Commission was minimal and focused on more clarifying questions to staff about the language of the code text. Staff clarified that the amendment refines the interpretation of the existing sign code, which mentions planned centers but lacks more formal definition of shopping centers.
It mentions shopping centers, not planned centers.
I see. The Commission then proceeded to their vote of four to zero, recommending approval to this body. Chair sessions at the time did not vote, and Member Murray was absent from that meeting. Otherwise, staff is happy to answer questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions?
I have some questions. In the resolution, as I'm looking through it, what does it ask us to do? Because I'm looking at it, and it says, I mean, there's, doesn't, you've got section one, the amendment and adoption stating the shopping center is a commercial development, but it tells, doesn't tell them what they can do. So tell me, can you explain it to me a little bit, Josh?
So, this is an ordinance, not a resolution.
Right.
And resolutions, because of all the legalese, there has to be all the preambles, the whereas', and then the sections, severability, et cetera. But then the exhibit itself defines the text. And so, our current code says that freestanding signs are only allowed on properties that are not part of a shopping center. And, and the, the way it's worded is, in order to have a freestanding sign, you have to have at least one acre of land and/or be, be part of a shopping center. So the shopping center is restricted to one freestanding sign. So this definition clarifies what a shopping center is, because currently we don't have a definition. So the only thing this text amendment does is clarify what a shopping center is, which will help me to enforce my current interpretation.
This is Commissioner Blocker. So, this is a, a great definition, but to me, it's only describing kind of the hardware of what a shopping center is. Do, should we add anything like retail stores and service establishments? What about parking? Should we add anything about, there's usually parking? No, what are your thoughts there?
Well, this isn't related to parking. It's related to the signage within the center itself. And so I don't think we need to add parking. I don't think we need to add retail. It's to grab, uh, commercial subdivisions plus any other development that includes any multi, uh, sorry, multi-lot or multi-tenant development, strip malls, et cetera. So retail is kind of built into the definition already.
So are you saying that we, when we did the signage a year or so ago, this was not in there already?
Uh, no, there's no definition of shopping center, but shopping centers were already in the code. And so...
One single, I mean, at that time, it was for a one, single for the shopping center.
No, so, the previous code text amendment changed what was allowed size-wise for freestanding signs and monument signs, as well as clarified temporary signage and a few other things that Janet helped me put together for that, that sign code text amendment. Shopping centers were already mentioned, that wasn't changed, and we haven't had a definition for shopping center. So this clarifies my current interpretation of the code and provides strength to that interpretation. That's the whole goal.
So the whole goal is just to have shopping center defined?
That's correct.
Easy. Because if it was anything else, it didn't say anything else in there. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to participate and share? Okay.
Make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
Can do that. Blaine, for me?
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Vaughn Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Look for motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the shopping center definition code text amendment based on the findings listed in Amendment Table fifteen, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Jeremy Archibald.
I think we've all read the letter.
Yeah.
Sounds great. You don't have to come explain it if you don't want. I think we've read it.
I think he needs to earn his pay.
Okay.
This is just, uh...
I need you to speak in the mic.
Requesting, in all the different counties, support the budget requests from the state for cyber security. Awesome.
Awesome program.
Thank you.
I was gonna say.
And, uh, I think, I think we should definitely sign it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve and co-sign the letter in support of the cybersecurity funding as currently written.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we, uh, so as I, I went through this myself, this is, um... For the discussion on the Airport Advisory Board members, did everybody have a chance to go through all the things? Okay, appreciate that.
Are the suggested folks, those that are listed here, do you have?
That came from Raylene and Vaughn.
They met with Joe, I think, the three of them met, and they went over it. I only had one ask as I, as I went through it myself and wanted to discuss it here. I thought, I felt like it would be good to have Dane Wilkinson on the board. I think he's got a ton of knowledge, ton of background there. His family donated the, the land for the, the airport. So, and I know we have hopes for him in other positions, but I thought it would be a great way to have all that training done before Joe leaves us and, and have someone that could take right over if that's, if that's a desire of their heart. So that would be my only thing is, is I really think that one of them should be Dane.
And I could agree with that. I have a question, though, is, we did not have any applicants that were non...
We have two users.
Because none of these are non-users.
So Michael D. doesn't have an airplane or a hangar. I guess he could...
He just wants to get it, get one, because he states in his resume that he wanted to get a hangar. He's on the list. So that would be the only thing. So he would be the one...
Huorsman is a non-user.
Yeah, he is a non, non-user.
Because in his application, he said the same thing.
Well, they're a non-user if they don't currently have a plane or a hangar in there, right?
Well, it says Michael D. is a user, and Josh, and then Hugh Huorsman is a non-user, but yet in his application, it shows that he was a user.
So can you clarify that for us?
Yeah.
Joe? Hugh, what Hugh, why he would... Did you ask him to apply, or who? Okay.
So, I don't know him. I've never met him.
Okay. But he flies? Is he an air, is he a pilot?
He's a, he's a retired airline pilot. He does not own a hangar down at the airport or anything.
Right. But he is a flyer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does he, he doesn't fly down there, does he, Joe?
It shows forty years of flying experience. Base commander in Germany responded for...
Well, yeah, but I'm talking at the Mountain Green, or the Morgan County Airport.
I think you're...
That's what I'm talking about.
I think you're hung up on user, non-user.
Yeah, that's exactly probably what I am.
Or they're not a user of the...
So right now, he's not a user of the airport.
Okay, he's not a user of the Morgan Airport.
Okay.
Well, if you read in, in the advisory board, it says, two members will be non-pilots or non-regular users. So it's not saying that they're just not a pilot, or they're just not regular, like, my son lives in Morgan, but he's not a regular user of the Mountain Green Airport. He flies out of other airports. So I would say he would be technically a non-user.
Yeah.
So... I mean, it'd be great to have people that are non-pilots, but it's kind of tough to get people that don't really have...
Two members will be non-pilots or on a, or a non...
Non-pilots or non-regular users.
Okay.
So, that's how I read it, is...
I'm okay with that, and I don't think there's a problem with us expanding it to another member. I thought we had also, well, it says...
Well, I don't say we have to expand it. We can take one of them off. It's not like they've been called or anything like that.
This was just after, so what happened is Raylene, myself, and Joe met at the airport, and just kind of went through all the applications, kind of discussed any conflicts that there may be, or maybe personality issues. And one, one of my things, I think Raylene and Joe, we were all in agreement, is we were wanting to get a group that we felt would work well with each other. And, you know, we discussed some of the other people and, and, you know, that could be kept on task, you know, and that, as we kind of went through it and we looked at conflicts and that, we started to eliminate people that may have a conflict, that might be issues, it kind of whittled it down. And as, as Matt says, you know, Dane was there, and Dane is, is highly regarded. And, you know, we were, we were thinking one direction, but I, I've got, personally, I have no problem with saying that we could move some people around and put Dane in there, and if he had aspirations to be manager, then that gives him the experience with the current advisory board to move forward, and if he wanted to apply, and, and then he knows what's going on, and it's, you know, a nice, easy transition. We're not having to get a new manager up to speed because they're starting at ground zero. And, you know, Raylene, I know that that was something that we hadn't just, we hadn't really brought that up, and it kind of came this morning, just thinking about, is, started thinking about, there's like, maybe that's not a bad idea if he's desiring to be a manager when that application opens, he's already up to speed. You know, he is on the advisory board, so, um, anyhow. I don't know, Raylene, if you want to speak to that, or your thoughts, or...
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with them being on there, too. Yeah, we discussed each one pretty thoroughly for like an hour, and Joe knows them all well. They're all really great applicants. I mean, I don't think you can go wrong. They, these five that, that we're presenting to are, they are task-oriented. They tackle things and complete them on a timely manner. I think they could bring a lot of improvement to the airport, and Dane could, too, I'm sure, and like I say, you can't go wrong. How long would Dane be on the airport? There's a new position that's, or on the board, the advisory board, when the new positions open up? That's a concern. Might not be very long, I don't know.
That's up to Joe. How long he's gonna stick around. But again, I, you know, as I've thought about it throughout the day, it was kind of a, you know, even if it's three months, four months, six months, he, it's, we're, we're not starting from ground zero with a new manager if he desires to, even if he desires to apply for that. We're not starting at ground zero, that they would be up to speed with what the advisory board's doing and starting, and then, then we just bring in a new advisory board member, right? I can kind of say...
And those are public meetings, so he could always attend them and be up to speed as well.
That's true. That is true.
I know you're still discussing that. I did want to throw out there that I wrote the resolution, so I just threw in two-four, two-four, two-four terms, so I'm not committed to it. I have the written document up here. I can modify whatever you need.
Raylene, oh, sorry.
I just know that the, our resolution, or our statute said that it had to be staggered, so I just kind of hail maryed it.
Raylene, were these people asked to apply, or were they, um, did they just apply?
Yeah, no, I reached out to a lot of people, because we weren't getting any applicants. So, yeah, I reached out to all those people. And Vaughn, who did you reach out to?
I had a few people, I can't remember the names. I'd have to go back through and see who it was. I just encouraged them to spread the word, to have people apply.
Yeah.
I didn't ask anybody specifically, but just said, hey, get the word out there.
I reached out to a lot of people, saying, hey, this is open, apply, it'd be great.
It just seems to me, having worked down there a lot, these, this group of people are all buddies, and they all belong to their little group, and I just don't, I want some outside input. I don't want just one, a one-thought process of, um, these guys are all, these... What's the difference between a buddy and a friend? I don't know. I just know they're in, they have their little club. They have their little club. They have the little club that they land in their, in the dirt and stuff like that. And I don't want the, the airport to just be only about backcountry flying. I want it to be well-rounded airport. And that, this, this group of guys are all into the, into the backcountry flying, so I just think it needs to be...
Me was, they talked more about improving the grounds, clean up, making it look good for the community. That's what impressed me was, they wanted the airport to be aesthetically beautiful for the community. I didn't talk to them about flying particularly.
Okay. I think our internal discussion that we had was mainly focusing on what those individuals could, could specifically do. Like for Sean Beckstrom, he's, he's good at gathering people together. So we would put him over public, you know, awareness, or whatever you want to call it, gathering people together. Sean, or Josh, he would be good at planning as well. He's a good planner. And Mike D. and Stanbridge, they're both doctors, of course, so put those in any position that you want. I don't know Huorsman, Hugh, whatever his name is.
Don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I don't know, I don't know anything about him either.
And one thing, during, during our conversation, we did, it was like, what can people do at the airport to kind of, if you remember, we had the days where they'd have the military come and, you know, is that...
Events.
Different events and things they could do, like a tethered hot air balloon day, and things that people would go for a little ride up and down. You know, bring the airport back into our community, get people to the airport to check it out and see what's going on. The other thing that I did ask Joe to do was to identify some tasks that each board member, like this, like a portfolio. We want, your job is to do A, and your job is to do B, and, you know, so that it's not just kind of a random do-whatever, but I do remember, we, we'd spoken about that, like, put some tasks together, like a portfolio for each member, you know, to try to have it a little bit more organized, if that, if that makes sense.
I think this group will bring a lot of organization.
Say that again, Raylene, sorry.
I said, I, I, like you said, I feel this group would bring a lot of organization and structure to the Airport Advisory Board.
I'm okay with any of them. But we just picked what we thought.
Okay, no, I...
I mean, I, I, I do like, kind of what Matt has said, I mean, do we, um, I know that we had a different thought process going on with, with Dane, um, that I kind of, as I've been thinking throughout the day, and as I've been reading over everything, it was like, is it something, why, like, I kind of like the idea of maybe inserting him in there somewhere. I do. Where we do that, I think, you know, again, that's just my feeling, I'm only one of the five of us, but that's kind of my, um, it's kind of my thinking throughout the day. And I thought, you know, again, during the, the meeting here, so we were upfront and open about it, is the place to bring that up, and I just think, you know, I do like that.
Mike, do you have any thoughts?
You know, I, I don't necessarily know many of these folks real well, and I certainly don't know them in the capacity for the airport. I, I trust Commissioner Blocker and Commissioner Nickerson and, and Joe to come up with, with the list, so whatever you guys suggest, I, I will support. But make a suggestion soon, because this is taking a while.
We made our suggestions, so...
Blaine, do you have any thoughts?
I just, I just think if, you know, if you think strongly, but maybe we ought to include him as a seventh member.
So our, our code does say that it's a seven member, and there's one non-voting, which is the, the commissioner, and so if you add a seventh, it would require a text amendment, and then you have a potential tie unless you made the commissioner a voting member.
Yeah, you have to make the commissioner a voting member.
Okay, I'll just look for a motion then.
Do you need a call?
Or, I have another thought. If you're gonna include Dane, then why not include Jen, and then you make it a eight-person advisory board?
You'd still have to do a text amendment to do that, and I, I will say, you get too many people involved, it, it's a little harder to come to a consensus. That's just my thought.
My thing is, is do we, again, we, we've got people that we like on there, but to include some of these people that we had different thoughts about, do we remove a couple, one or two right now from what we've suggested? And then when manager job comes up and they start to apply, we'll have those two seats. And it may be, I don't know, Joe might decide he'll be here for five years. I'm not, I'm guessing no, but maybe five weeks or three months, I, I don't know. But hopefully it's more than two. No, he says he's, he'll be here till the manager's up and running. Get a, get a new, get a, get a new manager in.
You hire a new airport manager? I'll help you go through the, and have a seamless process.
And, and so, we know we've got Joe for a little bit. What that timeframe is, we don't know. So, so that we're not wasting more time with a text amendment, what do we, I mean, Raylene, do we want, we want to put both of them in and then do an advisory board change here in a few months or whatever, or just do one? What do you think? The other three are like, they're, they're seem okay with what we're doing, so...
What was your suggestion, Vaughn? I'm sorry.
So, do we want to, basically, instead of doing a text amendment and taking more time, we remove one of the, one or two, depending if we want to do Dane and Jen, remove two, one or two of these people until the new manager position opens, then that can be that seamless transition, and then we can reinstate, or not even reinstate, but we could have them apply and then fill those vacant seat or seats on the advisory board.
Yeah. We just kind of brought up, you know, how to create, like, fun, that, with each, one guy, personality.
And, and I think the biggest thing is just, again, coming to light, just thinking about it, is getting that, if, if Dane's concerned in being the manager, get him up and active and going right now and being, so that he can start to get in the process and not just be a visitor sitting in the, in the seats, but get into the process, be part of it, and then if...
And that goes with Jen, too, right?
Yeah, that, that's my question. Do we want to do one of them or both of them? I'm fine either way. I, I'd be happy to put them both in there, remove two of these to put those two in.
I'd do both.
You want to do both? I'm, I'm good with that.
I mean, there's also nothing wrong with somebody attending all those meetings, even if they're not on the board.
Right.
So you could certainly invite extra folks to attend and participate.
I, personally, I mean, I, just as I've been thinking about it, I, you know, I'd like to see them in their active part of the decision-making, if we're gonna, if we're gonna invite them or have them there, that's, I'd like them to be, have, have some skin in the game and not just sitting there. This, this is my opinion. And so...
So are you gonna make a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm asking you, like, do we want to take two of these off and put those two in, and then which two do we want to take off and...
I prefer to just to add the two.
Well, we can't add two and have them part of it without a text amendment.
Right, we have to have a text amendment.
And so, to just move forward now, we just remove two for the time being, put those two in their place, and then once the new manager is seated, then we can seat the, the one or two back in.
I prefer to do text amendment.
I think the issue, Commissioner Blocker, with the text amendment is, we had a seven-member board, and it did create some, um, some difficulty in, in managing affairs, and, and the... And, and the larger board made a little more sense because at the time there was still some build-out that was allowed at the airport. Now that all of the land is being used, it, it was originally suggested to have a three-member board, but then in the discussion at the text amendment, i- it was bumped up to five voting members and then having a commissioner attend as part of their portfolio. And so that's just a little bit of history from, you know, before you and Commissioner Nickerson got here of what even led to the initial text amendment. So just, I don't know if that's helpful, but I thought I'd throw that out.
I'm going to leave it up to you two. So I ju- I just, I don't want this to go on all night, but.
I'm just going to ask one more question as to Joe. Joe, what's your feeling on the five or removing two? And what do you think?
I think we've already discussed those.
Okay.
It's been time on.
Just wondering.
If Commissioner Wilson has.
I already voiced my concern, so that's, that was my opinion, so.
Well, and, and one thing with.
Bring on there when there's only a five-member deal.
You don't, you don't get everybody on there.
And I would hope that, and then I'll, I'll be done with this part, is that as the advisory board works with the manager, that the manager's job is really to make sure that that group functions and that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
It has to work, the airport manager has to work well with the advisory board.
Correct. And from what I'm kind of reading with Joe is he likes the five and he's willing to work with the five and make sure that the five don't run rough yard on, is that, like, they're going to get their own little special group going and?
Yeah, there's no special group. They're going to have, what I, what I envision is having their own portfolio or their own thing that they're going to be responsible for. And as the group, they're going to come together and make the team.
Okay.
Just like we discussed.
One thing for you, just as a, I mean, we can keep it at the five, but what I would like to see is the more people that want to be involved, there, if there's one of those members of that board that can grab onto that person and say, hey, let, would you please help us and make, you're not on the board, but you know, let's help each other and get this thing the way we want it to be done.
Yes.
If you could do that, that would be, I think, a great way to involve the people.
Yes, and our discussion previously too is we're going to have an, we would like, I would like you to have an airport manager and an assistant airport manager to, you know, to take, take care of two different things. I think it'd be way more efficient. We discussed that as well. So I think we can make this whole thing more, more efficient going forward because I've been here for a long time and I've seen it work really well and I've seen it not work really well, so.
So when, just Joe again, I keep, I keep lying here, I keep asking more questions. When can we expect to see kind of a portfolio, kind of the tasks and that? Is that, do you have that already or you're just working on that stuff?
I've got the notes.
Perfect, thank you.
Just like what we discussed.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, resolution CR 25-22, a resolution of the Morgan County Commission to Airport Members, the Morgan County Airport Advisory Board, as written. Does that work?
No, you don't have to read the whole thing.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Nickerson and a second from Commissioner Factral. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I'm opposed. Okay. Was that Newton? Did you, did you second it?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Honorable Garrett, thank you, Joe.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so this, this is a discussion that's been taking place at multiple meetings with Buster. We had both of our commissioners that have the portfolio assignment over the airport. And we were hoping to get it to a work session today, but it was already taken and, and we couldn't work with the schedule. And so we put it on the agenda to hopefully use this as a time to work session it as much as possible, but at least get it moving forward specifically because there's timing issues with good weather and construction and things of that nature. And also with the lease itself, so. I don't know if Commissioner Nickerson or Commissioner Blocker want to share their thoughts from those meetings. And then I have a copy of the lease and I've highlighted things that I think need to be discussed and or changed because it's very specific to the U.S. Forest Service building. And then I, I think Buster can, can share some of his thoughts as well, but we probably spent, I don't know how many hours we spent, but I would say it was at least one and a half to two and a half hours twice. So I would say about four is what I would guess we spent on this. So Commissioner Nickerson or Commissioner Blocker, I don't know if you want to throw in any of your thoughts about where you were thinking that this would go to give direction to the commission on your thoughts, but then we'll just go into the lease and start talking about the new or the amendment that's being proposed.
Yeah, this is a, this is a tough one because Buster has put in so much time and energy into this project. And then we have other member, members of the airport that feel like it's more of a monopoly. It's kind of a tough spot to be in. And then parts of me thinks, you know, maybe we should have the new Airport Advisory Board look at it. Or another part of me thinks, well, I know Buster's trying to move forward and time is money. And there's just so much, I, I just have not come to a conclusion.
I think, you know, a lot of it's kind of what Raylene, Commissioner Blocker's been saying is, I'm in agreeance with, I'm trying to think of how to word this so it makes sense. I know a lot of the concern is that, you know, Buster's original plan was the Forest Service, so it was going to be one tenant. It's going to be kind of a, a big deal right there. Now that's not happening. He's, his lease is now allowing him to kind of, like with the words that Commissioner Blocker uses to kind of monopolize that last commercial space in Phase Two. And I can't read the, all the words got really small there. That's better. I can't control this one. My iPad died, sorry. And that's kind of one of my concerns as well is that, you know, as he builds it down, he's put in a lot of, like Raylene said, a lot of time, effort, money to improve, to entice the, the Forest Service to come. And I, and I discussed this a little bit with, with Joe and in the meeting about if we were to move forward and allow him to build these hangars, it would be, we would have to, in my opinion, really restrict what tenants can be in there. So it cannot become a privately leased hangar for them to store their planes. It must be a very specific airport use, you know, whether it's A and P, you know, a paint shop for planes or whatever it may be, but it's very restricted. And I think, I think we would need to do something strategically there so that somebody can't come in and say, okay, Buster, I'm going to do this. And then they do an end around and now they're just subletting hangar space. Because this, this needs to be a commercial area in the airport. You know, we want it to look good. I mean, I, I look at Buster's hangar and it's a beautiful hangar and we want it to be kind of kept up to the, you know, some good standards, so it's nice up there. But that's kind of my biggest concern is that somebody comes in, if we leave that lease too open-ended, then we get people coming in there and, and doing an end around to privately lease a hangar just for their use and not really a commercial space. That's, that's my biggest concern with it, is that, so.
Another thought is, you know, what is best for the county? What's going to bring in most revenue for the county, for the airport? Buster has done a great job. It'll be cohesive, it will be aesthetically pleasing to the eye, he'll take care of landscaping. So what is best for the county is the question.
See, and with that, with what Commissioner Blocker is saying, you know, when we look at what's best for the county, when we look at this piece of ground, you know, I'm wondering if, you know, if we let Buster go forward and he builds these hangars and starts to lease them out to these businesses, I'm, you know, when you look at other airports around and what they're doing, I says, I'm, I'm wondering if our lease rate to those peoples shouldn't be higher, that we should get per square foot. You know, are we really cheap at, was it 24 cents a foot? Is that what, is that what our lease rate is on the commercial spot there?
The, the current Forest Service, as it's labeled, lease has it at 24 cents. And I have done some research and around for similar reports that I can share.
Do you have, yeah.
So our company looked at 13 different airstrips in this area, Hurricane, Canav, Colorado City, Penguich, Milford, Fillmore, Mufi, Fort Bridger, Duchene, Municipal, Monticello, Bullfrog Basin, Hanksville and Green River. We called them all. We got in touch with four managers we found, and these are all similar in that actually a lot of them are more capable than our airport in that they have lighting and some of them even have instrument approaches, but they're certainly closer to us than we are to Ogden in, by way of facilities and assets, air traffic control, security gates, all that. So it's 15 cents per foot per year at Hurricane, according to Dave. Jeff Turner at Canav said it was 20 or 25 cents a foot per year, depending on where on the airfield. Michaela in Milford, 17 cents. Duchene, Muni was 12 cents a foot. And Deborah Heron gave us that information. I just got information from somebody at Ogden that owns a hangar there. So when you talk about these folks are in the 15, 12, 15, 17, 20 cent range, Ogden's at 68 and a half cents currently. And that was just texted to me by a hangar owner. And of course, they have fuel, air traffic control, lights, instrument approaches, security.
So are those prices like for like a private hangar or for like a commercial-based? Like they're running a business out of that hangar?
I can only guess at that one. At Ogden, it's a private hangar.
That's 68 cents. But the other hangars, are those a privately owned hangar or are they running a business out of those, do you know?
I don't. I can only guess. They're, they're, I've been in some of these and they're very remote. I don't know who would be running a business out of there, so I'm assuming.
Well, and that's, and that's kind of, I guess, my, my question is, is if they were running a business, you know, because businesses, they pay more than what private does, you know, across, you know, pretty much all aspects. So if we're going to lease these to a commercial entity, you know, if, if you're going to build a hangar and then you're going to sublet this building to Joe's airframe and powerplant mechanic business, is, should it be charged at a higher rate than Bill who just has his hangar and keeps his private airplane in it? That's, I guess that's my question.
I'm, I'm happy to entertain negotiations if, if I might just comment on that a bit more. I mean, it really boils down to some subjective fairness, like what's the air fighter equipped with? And then it also, a sense of magnitude maybe is worth discussing. So I ran some numbers on a spreadsheet before coming, just to see like, what would it change? I proposed a draft, I emailed to Attorney Smith here recently of what maybe we could turn the USFS model into to kind of clean it up. And in that I said, well, instead of 24 cents, maybe we start at 26 cents. And 26 cents right now is 44% higher than the public ones or the private ones are paying at 18 cents. And then, and then if you take that, you 26 cents for every cent that you go up on a 3,600 square foot hangar, a 60 by 60, that nets you $36 more a year. So for magnitude, fairness and magnitude. So, and if you go up every nickel, if you go up a nickel more, then you're at $180 more a year for a 60 by 60, by raising it by a nickel. So I throw that out there as a sense of magnitude as we negotiate over cents per square foot. I think the real value, in my opinion, is in the property tax. So for example, I went in public records and I averaged out all the hangars on the east side, all the white hangars, and they are averaging as of last property assessment, 63 cents per square foot of property tax for the building itself. Our building was assessed 96 cents. So not only are we, we invested greater than six figures just in the external appearance of it, we're also now paying 52% higher as a result in per square foot. So I'm not saying I have a problem with that, I'm just saying we're already.
Hold up just a second. Property tax, we're, we're mixing a lot of things here. Property tax values are based on the value of the structure.
Right.
And obviously what you built is, is much nicer than, than the other hangars that are there, and that's why the property tax value is higher. So I, I don't think that it's fair to say, well, because we're paying property tax, we should pay a lesser per square footage amount, or we shouldn't pay a certain, I, I actually look at it completely different. You're, you, you suggested that because the airport only has certain amenities, the value should be less than certain airports. I look at it, it's just the land value. Never mind that there, if, if you're going to use this as a commercial enterprise, never mind that there's even an airport there. The fact is, the value of that land being used for something has a, a pretty good value, right? I mean, we lease space for a cell tower at the fairgrounds, right? And we get more off of that cell tower lease than we get off of 90% of the hangars combined at the airport. And they take up way more space and a lot more resources. So to me, I'm looking at it and saying, look, if I were to go out anywhere in the county and I want to lease a piece of ground and I just want to put a business on it and lease that piece of ground for 30 years, what would it cost me to lease that ground? Because the other thing you've got to remember is, in Morgan County, property values are really high right now and have been for some time. And so whether it's an airport or not, frankly, the, the lease rates on all of our hangars, I think, are far too low, even though we're collecting property tax. I mean, if you just do a Google search of what, what does it cost to lease bare ground in the state of Utah? And it's between 60 cents and $12 a square foot, depending on where you're leasing that ground. To me, that's where we ought to be talking is, what's the value of that ground? Because you're talking about tying up that ground for 30 years.
Yes, sir. I can, I, I can only guess at supply and demand in that case because the airport's obviously in its own zone, it's got its own users.
Well, and I would say the demand there is probably much higher than elsewhere in the county.
For, for private, I would agree. But I don't know how many other businesses in Morgan County, as a rural county, are in the aviation business when the airfield is largely constrained to what I do. For example, if you were to run an avionics shop out of Morgan County, you have to test the avionics. I have nowhere at Morgan County to test the avionics because there's no navigation aids at Morgan County. So it's a supply and demand of, if it's a business use for Phase Two, then how many aviation businesses are out there that would go to an aircraft, airport that has not all the amenities? I don't know. I can't answer that.
Maybe on the, on the other hand, if we're looking at best value for the county, maybe we don't care if it's a aviation-related business.
Oh, right. I can't.
If, if just any business had come in and pay us $10 a square foot or $6 a square foot, why would we not do that?
Yeah.
You can't just have any business on there.
We could.
I, not really. It had to be airport, according to the rules, it has to be airport.
I'm just saying, why would we discount it simply because it's an airport-related business versus anybody else? If somebody comes and wants to rent a piece of ground on, that we own, we would not charge them 24 cents a square foot to rent it, anywhere else except at the airport.
If we have, if we could remember back three years, three and a half years ago. Yeah, we talked about this, about how I thought the prices were way too low, but I was outvoted. And I mean, that's a pretty cheap lease, either way you look at it, whether it brings it. But the one thing I like about Buster's is is the fact that he brings in a business, which also brings us in more money for the county. And whether it be sales tax, because I know he brings in sales tax for his stuff, that brings us in money. The property tax brings us in more money because it's a commercial business, whereas these other ones are not a commercial. They might be taxed at a different rate. I don't know exactly how they're taxed, but isn't the tax only like $1,900 a year for a 3,600 square foot building? I, I'm just saying that right now, I'm, you know, sure, there's been some differences and different things. Uh, I'm just saying that right now, I'm, you know, sure, there's been some differences and different things that has happened within his original lease. They've changed. So maybe we have to go back to the drawing board and determine, I mean, what you guys have already done and determine, okay, what is the best economic value we're going to have for this county? Out of this business, it's the same thing with your business or your business. It's the same thing or my business. What is the best economic value for this county? If we're going to do it and still try to stay small and rural. See, we've got two things we want in this county. We want economic development. We want to be able to do and all, do all these things we want to do, but yet we don't want to grow. So we have to, as a commission, we've got to decide what do we want from Morgan County? And in my opinion, right now, currently from what I've seen of Buster's, I would like to see that. Sure. I'd love to see a higher amount. I'd love to have, see a higher amount of, of income off of that leased ground. The ground was given to us as an airport. We've put a lot of money into the airport. We are getting more money now than we did before. I just think we've got to quit making it a private club down there. And right now I think it's a private club. And this is an opportunity for us to not have a private club. It's an economic benefit. Now I would like to see a couple more things done in his building or whatever it is. I'd love to see some of these other things that maybe if Brent, Brent Hayward doesn't do his fuel, you know, maybe he needs to be the one that does it. That brings in more economic income for us in the county. And, and so I look at it from an economic standpoint. Whatever we do, we ought to be looking at it from an economic standpoint and keeping us rural. How are we going to make that? And that's what I think we have to decide.
And maybe I can frame just a few things and Josh, I don't know if you can go to my screen where it can get a little bigger. Oh, okay. That's all right. I think, I think part of the question is, and, and at least the discussion that I remember is how much does the county want to be involved? Because I think, um, you know, from Joe's perspective, what the county could do with that ground may be more beneficial to the county, just as the thought process and, and maybe, um, revenues. Um, but, but for Buster, right? We, we have this lease here and there's been no breach of the lease as of yet. And that's kind of what we've discussed is he's made best efforts. I think that as a county, we can work in good faith as well to see if it can work out. Now his plan is changing and so our exhibit B, which becomes the phase two of the airport master plan, that has to be updated. Cause currently, right now, the exhibit B of the existing lease is the US Forest Service building. This, this whole lease is based on the US Forest Service coming. And you can even see the watermark behind it, right? And specifically has the USFS, um, hangar. And, and so that's where, you know, there's some anticipated language that says we may be working with a third party and so we're going to work in good faith to extend certain deadlines. But it's not a deadline issue right now. It's that the US Forest Service isn't coming. At least that's what they've indicated at this point. And so that's the need for a new lease to say, okay, what does it look like now? If we're not getting the US Forest Service, it made a lot of sense for health, safety, welfare to keep the Forest Service here. That was the main priority of the county. It wasn't so much the economic value. From what I recall, I could be misconstruing that, but I think that was the priority of the commission was to make sure the US Forest stayed, stayed here. Now we've extended that lease by five years. They indicated they wanted to extend it by 20 years. And so I think that they're wanting to stay in the building that we're leasing long-term. And if that's the case, then we need to reevaluate this lease and say, how do we make it the not US Forest hangar lease? And how do we make it the nine line 2.0 lease? And what does that look like? I think from the county's standpoint, we have agreed at least in good faith to a hangar, right? That's what it says of a private hangar. So that's at least one. There's a submittal for five, which, you know, now we'd have three more of the 60 by 60 and then the smaller one that was suggested for the Arrow Club. And I think to Buster's credit in, in our discussions, and we've talked about, well, the county, if we didn't have a middleman, we could have higher rents or, you know, lease it for more than that. And the question came up is, does the county want to be in the, the business of running businesses at the airport? Well, that was something that we couldn't answer with a knock quorum of the commission. I think that's something that you have to consider. Because if that's the case, my suggestion would be, um, you know, the county should pay pro rata for the buildings that they might want to use. It's already been designed. But that's at Buster's expense and it's not fair to take his plans and, and, you know, get a windfall for the county either. And, and so I think that that's the discussion to have first. And if the county doesn't want to be involved or if the county had, and I know Joe had some other ideas for maybe how that space could be used as a bigger benefit back to the county. Um, but if the county's not interested in doing that, then I think we get to the lease rates and things like that. But until the county decides how involved they want to be and if they want to be the one finding businesses to be at the airport, then, then I don't know that we really need to get into negotiating the lease rates, if that makes sense.
So I want to clarify a couple of statements that I made. Um, first off, I was okay with the 24 cent lease rate when the intent was to keep the Forest Service here. And the reason being is because I felt like there's a benefit to the entire community in keeping the Forest Service here. And I was willing as a taxpayer to subsidize the cost of keeping the Forest Service here. Cause frankly, 24 cents doesn't, doesn't cover our cost to operate the facility. I was a little, I guess annoyed that the last revision of this came back with a 20 cent rate, even lower than the 24 cent rate. Um, and I, I don't understand the logic behind that. I know you increased the, the parking by a penny, but then decreased the, the building lease rate a little bit.
I, I may be able to understand that because I know in the nine line lease, we actually did an 18 cents rather than 24 cents, because the idea was that the Forest Service would be paying. And, and so if I recall, it was a 16 cent at the time for the private hangars and then an 18 cent for the commercial hangars. And then a 24 cent because we realized that they would be paying a higher lease rate to Buster for that. And so my understanding of the 20 and the, and the, was it nine or something like that? Was to say you added in the 3% over the, and then went back to the nine line rate that you have for the other hangar. Is that? And, and then I'll just kind of clarify that when you said the 26, it's actually under this agreement, it is over 26 cents a square foot with the, the cola or, or the.
3%.
The 3%, because as a 20, 25, it ends up being.
I mean, regardless of that, even at 26 cents, you're talking six grand a year, which is really, really cheap. I mean, I, I previously had a building that was on railroad property and I leased ground from the railroad. It was about an acre of ground and I paid more than that per year, just to lease bare ground from the railroad. So I still think it's cheap. That being said, I, I agree with the idea that if there's sales tax revenue, that's, that's beneficial to the county. My concern is if we move forward, you build these extra hangars and then simply sublease them for whatever reason, right? And we don't get sales tax or they're subleased to a private entity. Then I feel like what we're doing is subsidizing your business in that you're getting land real cheap and then extending, you know, lease rates to somebody else. If that's the case, then as part of this, I'd like to see there's some type of a, you know, a kicker to the county on the, on the sublease. If there's sales tax involved, then maybe we don't need that, right? Maybe there's some other benefit. But otherwise, it just feels like I, I could not lease ground that cheap anywhere else in the county for any purpose. I mean, even farming is going to cost you more than that in a lot of places. So that's my concern with that. I actually don't, I don't have a concern with moving forward with the changes in your lease. I think that that's fine and I appreciate the work that went into the Forest Service negotiations. I mean, I think it would have been nice for them to be able to move over and have the facility that you proposed for them. I think, I think they made a mistake to be honest. And, and we benefited from it because they're still in our facility, but I guess that's where I'm coming at. I, I'm not trying to attack you in any way. It's just.
Understand.
You know, looking at it, it's like, man, this feels like we're, we're giving stuff away here. We would never lease ground for that cheap anywhere else in the county. I'm sorry. We just wouldn't. If there's another benefit to us, great, right?
And I don't think Mike, that any, all the airports could say the same exact thing.
They could, they could, absolutely.
It was, it was meant to be an airport, meant to be an airport facility. And, and I, that's why I said, we can't just lease it to anybody and, and call it that. So I, I think we have to in good faith make it, make it right one way or another, you know? And I, I don't think, I don't think Buster's ever been, tried to take advantage of us as far as.
No, I feel like Buster's been very honest. I'm not.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're been great.
May I, uh, address those comments?
Yeah.
So I'm happy to negotiate the 26 cent rate. Cause like I said, I mean, it's, it's 36 cent or $36 a year. I'm not gonna, that's, I'm fine with that too on my end, right? If I'm paying some extra. And I'm also fine with any hooks you want to put into it to ensure that it, it doesn't turn into a private subletting entity, right? That it's their sales tax and the other stuff. I'm, I'm happy to, to do that too. If I could, because quite frankly, as my last plea, if I get shot down, I'm probably out significant resources and time. If I could just read about seven points that I wanted to, to plead my case, and then if you shoot me down, then at least I'll, you know, be at peace that I, I said what I needed to say. So nearly five years ago on 5 June, 2020 is when Nine Line first showed intent to commit to the county by submitting our first formal lease application to the airport manager expressing interest in the phase two property. Nine Line is uniquely situated to partner with Morgan. Um, aviation businesses are a rarity in rural communities, let alone one that is thriving like ours and we've been blessed. We're not an emotionally detached entity from outside the county that is solely driven by financial bottom lines as indicated by the money we put into the appearance of our hangar. We're a hometown business that lives nearby and operates at the airport. The homes surrounding the field are our neighbors and our efforts to date demonstrate that we share in the pride of our community. Nine Line stands behind our word. We have fully performed to everything originally represented to the county. This includes building a quality hangar with over six figures of extra exterior enhancements, formally bidding on a project to keep the US Forest Service here for the next two decades, paying $12,800 of on-time lease payments, installing all the underground infrastructure to phase two, and remaining in faith by keeping the county attorney and airport commissioners briefed on all our efforts since the original leases were signed in August of 2022. We have created jobs at the airport. We promised an aircraft maintenance shop and we've delivered with two high-paying jobs over $165,000 a year in wages. We have a professionally equipped shop and an active airplane inspections and repairs are currently underway. We have even hosted a Morgan High School student for an internship under our mechanics. I'd like to disclose a sense of the investment that we've made in our county airport. Developing this plan B has cost us just over $50,000. If you add to that the efforts to bid out the US Forest Service proposal to provide a permanent home for the firefighters, we are now over $120,000. And if you then add the cost to bring in all the utilities to this parcel, we are over $200,000 invested. And that of course does not include the cost of the big, beautiful nine line hangar. This past April 2nd, Nine Line provided a written option A versus option B pro forma scenario to the county attorney and commissioners Nickerson and Blocker. It projected total county annual income from this one acre remaining of buildable site. If we were to build out the USFS Forest Service site plan versus the now plan B, as I'm calling it, plan, the increase in building square footage, property tax based on nine line construction standards and sales tax forecast, the old Forest Service plan would generate approximately $20,300 per year to the county. And the new plan will generate $40,900 to the county. So plan B effectively doubles the overall income generated. Nine Line is willing to work with other aviation companies that wish to relocate to Morgan County. In addition to businesses that we have the ability to stand up in these hangars, we also have received a letter of interest that I've sent to the county attorney, um, from an engineering firm in Tooele that does non-destructive testing on aircraft structures to inspect for cracks. And they also do oil analysis. And furthermore, just today I spoke to the owner of Avtech Services, a well-known FAA certified avionics and radio repair station currently out of Sky Park in Bountiful that wishes to work with Nine Line to relocate to Morgan County. Helping the large airport community, Nine Line has set aside the 60 by 42 hangar labeled as JJ5 in your materials in an effort to facilitate a self-sustaining Arrow Club for community members that wish to pool their resources on a shared hangar and club aircraft. Aviation is expensive and under current market conditions, cost is the barrier for the vast majority of aviation enthusiasts. As a teenager, I served for four years as a line boy in exchange for flying at my local airport. I hope to be able to do something similar here. I think it's important to create opportunity for others to utilize and enjoy this unique Morgan County asset and will build a hangar for such an opportunity. We are ready to continue moving dirt as early as next week by approving the presented site plan and lease modifications. Nine Line can assure the county a development standard that synchronizes with the existing nine line hangar, both inside and out. We can ensure continuity of not only appearance, but grade and asphalt of both the parking lot and ramp sides of the hangar, along with uniform landscaping. Mixing multiple developers in this small one acre lot is likely to generate some level of synchronization conflict getting in each other's way and will likely break up continuity of appearance, quality and landscaping. In conclusion, we believe that we have conducted our business with the county in good faith. Greatly appreciate the county's consideration for our proposal and hope you'll let us continue to partner with you to generate a win-win for both the residents and this small hometown business. Thanks.
So you may have noticed I was going to go back in and look through my emails and I forgot I was sharing my screen. So I'm not going to do that, right? Cause I, I'm like, there might be something. Yeah, don't do that. Um, I will say though, something after you presented the, the cost change. Um, and, and if you have that where it's got the 20 to the 40, I would just put in that the property tax does not all come to the county. There, there's a very different distribution because of the school. So that, that was one thing that I just wanted to point out that after I was looking at it, when you gave it to me, I went, oh, that's not going to be all coming to the county. That's just the taxes overall. No, and, and you're fine, but only about, you know, 15% of the pro, personal property tax comes to the county. But lease rates would come all directly to the county.
Sales tax will come to everything.
Yeah. Sales tax, like things like that. And, and I think that's more to Commissioner Newton's point is that if, if we had, you know, it's not the personal property that really impacts the county as far as revenue. It's the sales tax. It's, you know, the, the business side. And, and I think that we can structure the lease to be focused on incentivizing that or having some sort of.
And I think the sublease is a fair, a fair thing, you know? You sublease something and you charge, you get charged 20 cents and you charge 90. That's, you know, I, I think that's a fair thing to say.
And we can negotiate a portion of that.
Something, whatever that looks.
Right. Well, and I think, but I think the sublet aircraft storage, I think that's, that's probably the biggest issue, at least from the functioning of the airport, or at least the conflict between phase one and two, is we don't want phase two to become phase one.
No, I'm talking about a sublease to a commercial.
To a commercial, yeah. And I think that that's completely appropriate and we have our.
I'm not saying sublease it for somebody to have a hangar.
Yeah. And, and that's something that was in the other as far as aircraft storage. But it was, I mean, as I'm going through, it's, it's like specific to private aircraft hangar, meaning like nine line is a private company. And so I think that we would just want to structure it so that it doesn't become phase one in phase two.
Right. I would like to offer up too, that, that, uh, an idea was brought to me to, and I don't know if this would fall into commercial use, but one of the hangars potentially being like the VRBO, the formal VRBO for aviators. So, and, and it got brought up in the context of the Olympics. That you could charge substantial money and I don't know, I've never run a VRBO, if you have sales tax on that.
Yes, you do.
You do. So you could charge substantial nightly money to wealthy aircraft owners to come ski on a normal winter or Olympic when it comes as a potential use, a commercial use. I believe it's commercial use if you're VRBO and Airbnb. As one way to, to generate. As one way to, to generate, um, income, you know, on the order of like fifteen hundred dollars a night to sleep with your plane and go skiing.
Yeah. And as long as we collect the sales tax, that's a good thing too. I mean, there's a lot to it. Um, I mean, there's another one that is a potential, and that is, is as the state is looking at these new drones, vertical, vertical lifts, you know, one of your last pad, the last portion out there, the smaller portion, is you could actually have that there, and then there could be a rental or somebody around there with cars that they could rent to go wherever they needed to go to. They can transport into there and transport out. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could do with the airport. We've just gotta decide what we want. So I want to know, because I may have missed this somewhere in my emails. So your last proposal was to pay twenty-six cents a square foot? Is that correct? And nine cents for the, the, or eight cents for the parking?
Nine cents for the hard surface parking lot in, um, yes, sir. And the numbers on that too. If you were to run that scenario, just not saying that's where we land, but, uh, if you were to run that scenario, you would be, um, fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for the hard surface area a year, and four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars for the buildings. So you're talking.
Fifty-four hundred dollars.
Sixty-one hundred dollars total, sixty-one hundred dollars, eight and eighty-six cents, six one eight six, for year one of Plan B.
Then if, um, you've got sales tax on top of that, that'd be more than what you'd be paying on lease. If we were to do, if you were to do the VRBO and, you know, your charter business or whatever it is, the different things that you do.
Right. And as an example for sales tax, we've, we've generated in the first, we just started in December, but since January, our maintenance business has generated fifty thousand dollars in three and a half months.
You mean as far as revenue?
Revenue, just, just build, build revenue. So, project that out conservatively, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year, times seven percent. I mean, that's the sales tax that we're currently on a glide slope for, out of the Nine Line.
Are you able to charge sales tax on your full revenue?
Yeah.
It's labor, we, we.
You charge sales tax on the labor?
We, we did not think we had to, but we contacted the State Commission, and it's, it's like going to go get your oil changed at Young. And they're like, yep, labor, parts, everything.
Isn't that interesting?
All the other services don't, which kind of irritates me.
Installation, I think that's the difference. That's what I'm saying. Still installation, you don't. You can split it.
Right.
Material, you can do use tax and split it out.
I don't agree. It might change.
I mean, you're talking fifteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand a year in sales tax.
Yes.
Um, thank you for those seven points. I greatly appreciate that and all the hard work you've done. I wanted to ask Joe a question. Joe, have you done any research on what, um, maybe the average lease rate is for commercial or business per square foot around the state?
Um, my research shows that the airports, um, charge a flat fee, a flat, um, lease rate, but we just discussed, you know, Heber City, they charge an extra, fee on top of a business, if a business is located there in a hangar.
On sales or just a flat rate?
On the lease.
On the lease.
So they're charging them for the ground, and then they're charging them a lease. Hold on. They're charging them because they have a business of an extra. But that's off of gross sales. Does that make sense? So everywhere else, the ground is all the same price, everywhere else.
Oh, for, for commercial or?
Doesn't matter if it's commercial, private, whatever, it's still.
All the same.
Still all the same, you know, square footage. Um, for their hangar, there's, there's improved, there's unimproved. Um, and I reached out to a few airports that I considered were similar to us. And we're, we're within a few cents of those guys.
But they're just charging a premium above and beyond for the commercial probably.
And, and it was only Heber City, and we're not even Heber City, we're not even close to that. We don't wanna be that. But that's, that's what they do.
They charge you to land there now.
They charge you to land there.
They were ranked by Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association as the worst general aviation airport in the nation.
In the nation.
They earned that honor in Pilot Magazine.
Yeah, they earned that.
Interesting. Let's not, we don't wanna go down that road.
So I think you guys need to decide if you wanna go with Buster's plan or go find your own plan. I think that's where you're at right now.
I could say go with Buster's plan if he can make sales tax in all those other spots.
It, it has to be balanced. I suggest a balance.
It'd be fine too.
Just, it's gotta balance out.
What do you mean by balance? Can you just elaborate?
Uh, the, the worth of the property to what Buster's willing to pay, and have that be a benefit to Morgan County. Cause right now, it was a three-win with what he had. I figure it's only a two-win right now. So we just don't get the Forest Service.
Oh, yeah, the Forest Service. We have them on the other one, which helps.
Exactly. We don't get them, we don't, with what Buster's presenting now, there's only a two-win, you know? But we can have further discussions.
Well, and maybe the question is, do you still have questions that you want answered before you make a decision? Or do you feel like you could make a decision, like where, what could Joe or myself do to get you to where you feel comfortable moving forward?
I feel like if, if, if you were to put into the lease something with the, um, subleasing, if, if it warrants or it even brings that kind of, that's, that's where I would be. If you see what I'm saying. Do you?
Not exactly. You're.
Okay, so you're paying twenty-six cents and you, and you.
It's a lease for a new share, is what it is.
For a buck a square foot, then I think Buster said have a hook there for.
Maybe it's a small percentage, a percentage.
We're not wanting fifty percent of it or anything, just something small, you know, maybe it's ten percent. Discussed with this lease at the beginning is, well, we don't know what the US Forest Service is gonna pay. Do we share some of that lease? So that's what you're saying is, um, now, okay.
Are we, are we willing to make it and let him have one of them as a VRBO? That's another thing. And I don't know if we'd have to bring that back.
Well, and I suggested that to him because I wanted to distinguish it from phase one. But, I mean, that was one of the discussions we had, isn't it? Can we make it, if you did, something like that, let's make it more of a commercial thing rather than a long-term private aircraft storage.
Right.
And so.
I can agree with that too.
Me too.
But, but it's allowed under the CUP.
Yeah.
We, we have it under the CUP. The CUP is very general, related to aviation business at the airport. And so there's no need to, to amend the CUP. It would just be amending the lease and making the restrictions, kinda to Commissioner Nickerson's point of, we don't wanna allow um, competition with phase one. You know, there may be certain things that we want to restrict. But I think from Buster's perspective, the more, um, the more commas we add gives the ability to attract tenants and bring them in, because we can't really think of every single one, and, and maybe what it is, is airport-related businesses and private subletting is prohibited, or something like that. And then we don't even have to go into all the other specific details.
I got a question as well. So is the intent to tenant all of these hangars? Or is the intent to build and then sell those hangars?
Well, the intent is right now to build and me run businesses out of them, but that's a lot of work, so I'm entertaining javelin inspection or AVTEC, right? I'm reaching out. But I, I envision right now, and the market will dictate, a paint, a, a maintenance annex to grow my maintenance shop into one, a paint barn, an avionics shop, an aero club, and a VRBO. That's the kind of the current flight path that I'm building. And, and, and the point on avionics too, it's probably worth from an FYI, is I'm also working on a, it's, since October twenty twenty-two, I initiated the process of getting an FAA charter business out of Morgan. It's called a Part One Thirty-five. That's Federal Aviation Regulation Part One Thirty-five. It's taken me, on Friday, I'm meeting with the FAA, and we're finally getting the last Ts crossed, and I hope to have it within the next month. That's how long it's taken. I throw that out as a comparison, because if you're gonna have an avionics shop, that's FAA, what's called Certified Radio Repair Station, or you're gonna have, it's called an FAA Part One Forty-five Maintenance Station, which mine is not. I'm thinking about upgrading it to that. You're talking two and a half years from, at, at best, to get the FAA, to get the paperwork and approvals, and finally issue you a license to go do that. We have somebody in Sky Park right now who's well-established and wants out, and's been there for years, Don Young, and he wants out of there, and he wants to relocate to Morgan, and he's bringing. So, I, you know, this could compete with Brant's thing, but if Brant has not already started, we're, he's, you know, he's gonna struggle like I have, two and a half years. So that's how long it takes to get an avionics shop to even be licensed. And we've got somebody, now, I wouldn't offer it to Don Young without coming to the county first and saying, how do you feel about that, given, given Brant, right? I'm happy to give it to Brant too. Lease it out and say, you, you got this hangar, or I've offered Brant three options. If the objective is to have an avionics shop there, that's his ultimate objective. There's three ways I see it. You can lease it from me, you can lease it with an option to buy, or you can buy it at market value. Either way, you achieve your objective. I would do the same with Don Young, no different. But Don Young is quicker. If Brant is disinterested in that, you know, I don't know if he knows it takes two and a half years. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to him about that. But, um, I'm happy to help him. But that's how long it takes to get an avionics shop there. And we have one that's called today and said he's ready to go. So that's the vision. Sorry for the bunny trail on the avionics, but.
That's good for us to know. Yeah, I say it is good for us to know all this stuff, because that first round that we went through, I'm still not happy with it. Sorry.
Well, and, and I think we would wanna update, or, or at least I asked for your direction on subletting, because initially this was meant to be sublet to the US Forest Service. Uh, our other leases say that you can't sublease it in its entirety without prior written consent of the commission. This one says that you may sublease it without, without prior written approval of the county commission, but that was with the understanding that we were all on board with the Forest Service going in. And so I would just ask for your direction. Do you want it to be more like the other leases where they have to get pre-approval so that we know who's coming in and, and have an opportunity to see, are they a good fit for the county or?
I, I would personally like to see that, see him come to us.
Right, okay.
Give me all of them.
Yeah.
And, and so that, I mean, there, there would be that extra step of bringing these guys in and just making sure that it was a good fit, and they could come and answer questions and kinda do what you're doing here. But, cause we, I mean, I think everyone feels comfortable working with you. We've had a lot of interactions. You've built your hangar. We kinda know who you are. And so it would just be part of that vetting process of bringing someone in, that they would just come. And, and then they'd get that prior written consent of the commission before you sold it. If you're, or, or subleasing it too, I guess. Cause, cause if you, if you were selling the hangar, then you would also be assigning the lease. Right? You'd have nothing to do.
Right, and that would, that would trigger having to come, come in here.
Yeah, and so I think subleasing it in its entirety, or selling it, would require just, hey, come in, tell us who it is. The commission can ask some questions, but that's how, I'll kinda take that back to how it was with the other leases of just getting that prior written approval.
So do you want, um, five different leases then?
That's what we've asked for. Um, yeah, and that, that provides us, so, so by doing it that way, I, I got counsel that this would be a good idea, take it from the one to the five, because it does a few things from the business side. It isolates firewalls for liability. I got a paint barn in one. I got, I got AVTEC avionics in the other. If they're, if they're individual leased entities and they cause damage to each others, then there's a liability buffer by breaking them up. There's an insurance buffer, because now the insurance can look and underwrite the use of that hangar for that business. Is this, it's a higher risk versus a lower risk. And it lastly provides the opportunity to do the, come in front of the commission and, and bring a, a potential buyer business in and say, uh, I would like to reassign this lease pending your approval to this person with this business. And that's why I was advised that breaking it up into each individual one gives you the best flexibility.
Yeah, I agree with that. And Buster has already created the, um, legal descriptions of all the five, correct?
Yep, they're all stamped. It's on a stamped, uh, version from Civil Solutions Group.
And so what we would do is we'd say legally described in Exhibit A as, and, and we would just have to have the legal description for each of the leases, like we'd have for the Forest Service. And, and that's not hard to, you know, we just do five leases. They all have the same terms, but they'll each have a different legal description that we would put as Exhibit A.
And we should relabel them instead of JJ. We need to relabel them according to going up the running. So JJ, HH, II, JJ, KK, so on.
I, I'm happy with whatever.
Just right now.
Whatever the commission decides, I, I, we were H, and then I think you were the one that told me we can't use I because it references one, it looks like a one. So I skipped from H where Nine Line is and just went to J. And then, because they were oriented in line, but I'm happy to call them whatever. Yellow, blue, green.
Nine J, ten J.
So what's next step here? Just some negotiation discussion, is it?
Well, I guess we need to have a vote on, um, moving forward with a lease.
Well, we already have a lease.
Well, we have a lease.
We're talking about an amendment.
And so I think that, uh, there's a consensus that we're moving forward with Buster's plan as far as a new Exhibit B, cause the Exhibit B that is currently attached to this lease is the Forest Service building with the helipads. Now Buster's suggesting the one with the five, that you've all seen the picture of, right? So it's the five separate buildings. And so we would have to adopt that in the amended lease as Exhibit B, which would become the new phase two of the airport master plan. Cause we don't have that in our code itself. And so this would become new phase two, because Forest Service with the Nine Line was the other phase two master plan. So I, I think that we're moving forward on that. It's just now going through, I think I have what I need to say, Exhibit A, we'll just add the legal description, um, in premises and terms, we'll have airport-related business, and then specifically prohibit private subletting that would be, um, similar to phase one. I'd take out any rough references to the US Forest Service. Um, I think we're still, you know, there, I highlighted the leaseable square foot of building footprints. Um, I, I know in some of our newer leases, we were trying to get all the leases to end at the same time. And so we, I, I think that we had put in. And so we I I think that we had put in 27 years and then they have an option to renew for 30 because then it would get them all coming due at the same time if the county ever wanted to change what they're doing with the airport. So I don't know if you're opposed to that on getting it on the same timeline as the nine line that you've already got or?
I'd have to think about it because it's really about a depreciation of the building too, right? You're putting less of a timeframe on when that building might have to get leveled.
So a- and I'm not, I'm not stuck on that, but that is something we did do for the other newer leases. I think that the buildings, grounds and infrastructure, we just update that to remove references to the Forest Servi- Forest Service and then extend the deadline of something that would work with Buster's timeline.
Also Buster, you mentioned in previous discussion about landscaping and how you would possibly continue your landscaping all along Willow Creek uh, down to the end of the airport. Do you remember that discussion?
Yeah, I I said I would happily entertain some negotiations on. We we of course will landscape all of the phase two um, section. But if phase one were something that we were asked to do, we would certainly entertain like some sort of a we would do it, but can we get property tax abated for a certain amount of time or whatever? I I don't know how that works.
We can't abate property tax because most of it doesn't come to us anyway.
This is where the aviator and not the developer is going to come out, so pardon the naivete. But um, I'm happy, you know, we have resources. We live in the community. I'm happy to help. I don't know what that structure would look like, but as it stands, I I don't think I could do it for free to landscape phase one along Willow Creek Road, but I would happily entertain some sort of a trade.
When are you considering your landscape for your lot, your um, nine line building?
So they should start scraping the nine line building this. I had a meeting uh, la- late last week with the landscaper, kind of walked around the building. They should start scraping on it this month. But I've also told them to hold off in certain areas because it's going to get affected. If this is approved and we have to come back in with the heavy machines, I don't want to do any damage to the landscaping that we do as we move move further to the north. So um, we did meet last week and walked the property and he got my intent of the zero scape or minimal drip lines with a couple of plants on the corners of the buildings. And he's going to start as soon as he can. He's rallying up his troops, so.
So that would be nice if he could also just continue on down.
Right.
And get that done. I don't know commissioners, how does that look when you're? Can you do a tax abatement or what does that look like?
No, no.
You can't do a tax abatement, but I think you could um, do a rent, yeah, lease adjustment or a rent. Like.
Or maybe we talked to the contractor and we just hire them to finish it. Options too.
Yeah.
Buster doesn't have to be involved in the cost of that.
At his portion, we would want to have him do it, but the rest of it, I think, should be under our purview.
And if it is under the county, we have to bid for it just for our our processes.
I think Kate's working on the water portion of that, right? So what do we need to? I'm a little confused.
So I I think I have all of the the highlighted portions that we've kind of walked through. I think I have answers on everything except for the lease rent. Also, maybe Buster, you can go into something because I'm just looking here at C. This is something that I think I was reading where you were hoping that the county would pay to to connect some of the asphalt to the taxiway. Am I remembering that correctly or share costs there?
That was on the on the first um, the first project, nine lines hanger. But so here's, you know, sorry for the small display here, but so this would be a parking lot commercial off Willow Creek Road. And then this would be the aircraft ramp equivalent to the ramps that are in between the rows of hangars right now. So that would be installed by nine line. This would be installed by nine line. What we would hope for is the county would extend the parallel taxiway and tie in right here and then to the runway. And the reason that that's helpful is to relieve what's turning into a bottleneck at the only other intersecting taxiway. Uh, it basically right near the, if you're familiar, the FF row. Um, as certain taxiways reach out to the hanger that way. As people are waiting for people to land and then you have to back taxi and you're burning expensive six dollar gallon fuel, you can get further up the runway and wait here and then people can exit. You'd have this kind of counterclockwise flow off of the runway by adding this stub. The runway is cut off here in the very corner. So that's what we would hope for. We got this. We got this. County extends that.
And also about another $60,000 or $100,000.
Joe, on on that one, can we get a grant for that?
Yes, we can.
That's what I was wondering. I thought we could get a grant.
We should be able to go the full extent.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Of Buster's plan deal, but take it as far as we can when when we can.
I'd say do that.
That's and then that and then that the parallel extend, the parallel taxiway would be over. It would be, it'd be as far as it could go.
Okay, and so that's not an expense to the county to do that if we were able to qualify for the grant and you're confident.
Match 10%. So wherever the cost is, county's 10%.
And that comes out of a lot of different buckets now, including ramp caps.
Well, we have we have a new lease with Forest Service and so hopefully, I mean, it should be something there to cover it.
Yeah, and does the does the Forest Service lease currently go into the airport or does it go into the general fund? Does anybody know?
Airport.
It's airport. Because we set up now a separate fund. The airport has its own fund. So all lease revenues from the airport are going into the airport fund.
Including the Forest Service.
Including the building.
So. Which is much better than it was in the past going into the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Now it can self sustain.
That's right. Something you always wanted, Joe. I say something you always wanted. And so did I.
So I I think because you talked about the, you know, maybe the lease sharing, you know, it's sublet in its entirety or something like that. Um, is the lease rate at the, we can add the 3%, which is, I mean, the way I calculated it is it's like 26.23 cents if we went to two decimals or we just put it right at 26 and then just, you know, go from there. The other is 8.74 cents and then so you rounded it up to nine and rounded down to 26. So it's kind of.
I mean, if we're gonna, if you sublet it out, would it be fair to go and have their lease rate depend on what year it is after this year? Be a higher amount besides the 3%?
Well, I think that the reason they would lease it is because they're locked in for 30 years. That's the value that Buster would have for the sublease. It it and and so I don't see that we would renegotiate it unless we put some a term in that said, if you sublease it in its entirety, we renegotiate.
No, not him. I meant on the new one.
Right, I just know like if I was running a business and okay, I can understand that this is what the lease is going to be. And if I have to go renegotiate it, I might not want to take over the lease. But maybe that's what you want to have happen so that you see who it is, you see what they're doing. And so I can put a right, so we can put it in. I just don't know. If you like that idea, like.
Do my best, but I've been tricked before.
I I would suggest if it's sold or leased in its entirety that you renegotiate. That way you have control.
I just thought we were going to said something like a small percentage, shared percentage. That's what I thought. We kind of talked about a little hook on there to put a little share, like the lease price share.
And draw up some ideas.
I mean, just, right? Ideas.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then we can talk about it. We're not locked into anything. We just, we want to make sure that we're doing right by the residents of our county. If we're subsidizing an airport facility, we need to make sure that we're getting the most value that we can out of it, right? It's got to be, it's got to be fair and and equitable to those who are taxpayers in this community. That's that's my biggest thing. So whatever that looks like.
Okay.
So do we need a motion? I guess we don't. He's got his marching orders.
We'll bring it back. Termin rent, we just get to be determined.
Well, no, because we're not approving this until the lease until we negotiate it.
Can we put it?
I would, I would say we could make a motion to allow him to keep, to do the lease and work it out with Garrett and then bring it back to us.
Well, can we just put it on the next agenda so it so it's not sitting? And just make a motion to put it on the next agenda and then that gives us a couple of weeks to.
So if that's the case, we just postpone it to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
So Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we postpone.
We're postponing, so.
That they could come.
Yeah.
To negotiate?
I'll I'll get there. Make a motion that we postpone item number nine, amending uh, the US Forest Service lease regarding nine line holdings um, to allow time for negotiation between now and our next meeting.
I'll second it.
I was gonna say, is that for you, Buster?
You're just a couple of weeks.
We'll take what we can get.
Figure it out.
Okay.
So does that, does that mean?
I think I can do that.
Well. Well, no, you're moving forward with the negotiation of it. So that when he comes back in two weeks, we have a lease that has been negotiated and some options and we can sit down and say, okay, let's pull the trigger, right? Get it done. Yeah, we can't, we can't approve a lease at this point because it's not.
I lean second to this.
Okay, I've got a a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that a late aye?
Yes, she's on a delay.
It wasn't a, in a process.
It was not, it was not a nay.
Thought you changed your mind really quick there, Commissioner Blocker.
Oh, did?
No, it just came, it just came in delayed. It just came in delayed. That's no problem.
We taking a break again?
Thanks, Buster.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gerald. Kate, it's you finally. AEDs.
So Erica White, our deputy chief over EMTs and ambulatory services. She's trained everyone in the library, uh, public works and the county admin building on how to use the AEDs that we bought five years ago, but in that no one knew we had. But in doing that, um, one of them turns out to be dead. And that's the one here in the building. So right now we're rocking the AED that was off that 1987 brush truck is here as a temp. And then the one at the library is on the Fritz. So I need to replace two that I didn't know I was going to have to replace. Um, I got five amounts. The cheapest is actually who we use for um, our AEDs for the sheriff's office. And that's 3,783.40 total. So it's 1891.70. Um, so I just wanted permission to buy two AEDs to replace the one here in the admin building. So we'll get that one. We'll put that one back on the brush truck and then we'll replace the one at the library. The library one probably has till the end of the year, but all of uh, we need to replace the battery in order to do that and the battery is $800. So it kind of just makes sense to go ahead and replace the holding thing.
Let me say that number again, 3,000?
3,783.40 is the cheapest that I got. I got a four, 4,021, a 4,118, a 3807, but they won't ship to Utah, so that one's redundant. And then the 3783.40. So it's 1891.70 times two. But now if anyone has a heart attack in the building, we don't have to save you. There was a lot of laughing during that CPR class. I'm hoping they learned. Katie, did you learn anything?
Want to be shocked by one of these?
Don't, yeah, don't, don't have a heart attack near Katie. That's what she took away from that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of two AEDs coming from nondepartamental funds in the amount of $3,783.40.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That fastest item of the night short of the Lions Club.
Cheerleaders and Lions Club.
Right?
When the cheerleaders came.
And they came in, they're like, oh, we thought it was at seven.
Well, this one should be fast too. We've already budgeted, right?
No, this is for.
No, this is a grant.
This is extra.
No, this is for the one coming up. It's on a fiscal year, so.
But I thought we already set aside budget money for this.
Yes, well.
For the match, right?
Yes, we did. We did. But but this is for the new grant that we are going to hopefully apply for if we get permission. We don't know how much we're going to ask for yet and we'll come to you when we have that information. This was just to get the ball rolling so that way we can have that kind of uh, uh, opportunity to do the co-op grant this year.
Is it a 50%?
It's a 50% still. And I was going to show you something from our.
You said new grant. This is different than the one we've had in the past?
Because the state grants are split, so they start July 1. So we already were awarded 24 and we've already essentially spent it.
Same type of grant, right? It's not a new type of grant. It's the same one we've done the last several years.
But we've made it to where before we can apply for a grant that has a match, it has to come before the commission.
Yeah, and so as far as the amount we're going to ask for, we don't know yet. And the match would come from the TRT dollars and restaurant, TRCC dollars. So it would already be in the budget at that point, but it will be based upon what we decide.
So is there even a vote?
Is Vista Works helping us with this?
Yes, they do it every year.
So they're going to apply for it?
Yes, they'll apply for it. They know what we need. They know how to get the coverage out there. We've increased by 40,000 to $50,000 this last, this this last year and this year.
So what did we budget?
Last year it was 59,000.
That was our match?
That was our match. 59,250.
And in our, so in our budget, we have $60,000 for this one?
No, that's what we actually have for this one that we're in in 2025.
Okay, so what you're saying is then is you're going to ask at this next budget session for what you're going to want?
That's correct. That's correct. That is correct.
So what is the motion then?
The motion is basically it's, I don't know if it's a, I don't know that we have a motion.
For the UOT co-op grant.
Yeah. That's what the motion will be. So I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Newton to submit for the UOT co-op grant and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
De facto, yeah. This is a great deal. I mean, for the money, it's a great deal. Yeah, and I see their ads all the time.
Commissioner Blocker.
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Newton.
Uh, just, just one item, Wasatch Integrated Waste. I mentioned to you guys a while ago that the director there is retiring. They are in the process of hiring a new director and and we'll be extending an offer to that new director here shortly. So we should have a new director in place pretty soon there. And and I guess a quick update on the, you may have seen the information about Lake City. I mentioned this at our last meeting. Um, nothing new regarding that. They did hold a public hearing. Well, they, at their last council meeting, um, during the public comment, they received quite a bit of feedback from their residents regarding their intent to leave the district and most of that public comment was against that action.
Really?
Yeah, they they had about a four hour long meeting. Yeah, they they had about a four hour long meeting. If you want some entertainment, you can go watch it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fackrell?
Yeah, a few things, a few things. Um currently, right now, we have the opportunity till May seventh and this is where it's gonna need Vaughn and you, Matt. And Kate. Um to determine in outdoor rec that we can get a planning grant that will help us with the NEPA study. And with the infrastructure and trails. Uh or anything else we do along the fairgrounds. So they will do it for us if we want to apply for that grant. As far as cost, it's, I think it's a twenty percent match as well. So that's one that you need to, and we only have till the seventh to submit it. But that would help take care of that NEPA study that we need to put in a trail along there. Put a bridge across over to the multi-purpose field that we're doing or to do the multi-purpose field or. And that would be a big help is to do that multi multi-purpose field and have them help us with it or even the kayak park. You know, whatever it is we want, but there's so many things that we've been trying to do. And then number one is our multi-purpose field and our trails. And so and then the NO- NEPA study. So if we can get those things done in outdoor rec, that would be a big plus. And then all we gotta do is work on construction. So that's one.
Okay.
Item. There's some other grants available in outdoor rec and I wasn't, didn't have time to go and look them up. But there's a bunch of them out there. Um we had a good meeting with the Utah Department of Tourism on Friday. And they were very, very much impressed with our county, what we can offer. Um we took them to, um I mean, they're looking forward and they want to be able to help us in any way that we can possibly have help. Uh for the East Canyon property up there. And in May, we'll be meeting with Vaughn and I will be meeting with uh all the different entities that will be involved in that. Um to do some planning for that property. Is there anything else I missed on that, Vaughn?
They actually, they went around, I had to leave, but they went around the county, went to, they go to the Creamery?
Yeah, we went to the Creamery.
It'd be, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, so it was, they were, they were pretty impressed with what we've got.
And they would like to make another trip out here to see the rest of the county. And uh see Mike Schultz's Chinatown. Um and then.
They did bring up the uh. The film.
Oh, yeah, the film commission.
Yeah, they were up here looking around wanting to post some shoots in.
Yeah, and they want to actually, um I think they were talking to you, Vaughn, about doing some shoots at an actual cattle ranch.
Yeah, yeah, they were looking for some active ones.
Some active ranches, so that was a big plus for us. Um also, another grant that we might want to consider within outdoor rec is I, we don't need necessarily right now the trail crew. But for next year, we ought to be looking into uh taking advantage of the grant that is available by the state to do the trail crew. Which means they go around, they actually repair the trails, maintain the trails, and it doesn't cost us anything. Okay, so right now we have one already coming in cooperation with the state parks for the Mormon Flats and up to the Big Mountain Pass. So they're gonna be working on that this summer for two weeks. So hopefully they can get it done. If they can't get it done, then, you know, we're gonna have that obligation in our active transportation board to do. Also, if you guys can know of any potential legacy projects that you would like to do. As far as trails such as something that might be a, I mean, we had the brainstorm discussion today. It's a regional one that um they have. Um they're just wanting to get some ideas. They're ongoing plans. They're not anything specific for a timeframe. You can go to the Utah Office of or the UOR and look at that and determine. They've got a section there that says legacy projects and just give ideas of what we would want to accomplish here in this county. Whether it be with another county, such as one suggestion was is to put a a trail that goes along near the Great Western Trail along the peaks. It goes from Cash Valley or Rich County all the way down to Salt Lake County. Because down in Richfield, they've got that. They've got it in five counties and that's the Favant Trail. And so it goes between different locations where people can go and they can take their four wheelers or whatever and just go through on the trails. And in different kinds of areas and they can go see these things. So that that's one project that I think is important that we might want to be considering in outdoor rec. And we're also already doing it in trails, so, okay? Um and then. I need to know, do you want to have the Morgan Valley Car Show? It's coming up in June. Come in and request anything from you guys or not? Just do it like we're doing it?
They shouldn't need to because we've made it a county event now, so I don't think they need to do anything.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, that's it for now.
I I was kind of hoping, you know, Matt, you went to NACO. Was there anything from NACO or anything like that that you could report on?
Keep that. See, you did. Seventeen veterans commit suicide daily. That's one thing. That's sad. That's really sad. Oh, my heavens. Well, I, this is what I would say about NACO. It was a good experience. I don't think I would um go again. They have so much going on all at once. It's so difficult to to. If you go to one, you miss the other. If you go to the other one, you miss the other one. And so when you, and when we finally got to meet with our legislators, there was literally a hundred people. To to have a really one-on-one talk with them or talk about your community almost non-existent. So and a lot of them sat there. Yeah. But there, I did have some stuff for our office man, our clerks and office managers. They did have some some neat stuff. That could save us, possibly save us some money that I would like to look into and I'll look at that too. Or I might go through that stuff and get the, give them the calls and stuff and investments and things like that. Um we talked, they talked a lot about AI. WIR, I think, as I've talked, as I talked to the other people. And that's next one.
Yeah, registration's open.
That's, that's, that's the one that I think, as I talked to the different people that I sat with and said. If you had got, if you could go, if you're a tiny, if you're familiar with everything, what would you go to? And and that's, that's what it was. And so I would, I would love to see what was go to.
I think Vaughn said he was interested in going.
When is WIR?
It is May twenty one through twenty three and it's in Rapid City, South Dakota.
I can go.
Possibly I might school you. Issue. I mean, if that's something I'd love to go to, or maybe I could do it next year. And then I could schedule those days and I'd be interested as well to go check it out.
They normally have it in May.
What's that?
They normally have it in May.
Which is fine, just as long as I can kind of schedule my days, but I'd, I'd kind of read up on it. I was very interested in WIR as well. And I used all mine for all the trainings I went through at the beginning of this this project, so. I could call him sick for three days. I hope now it's out there by super.
You bet. It was actually, I usually have a hard time staying awake. It was, it was good enough that I stayed awake.
You stay awake more than Bill Cox?
Yeah.
It's good. It's good to go to at least once.
Yeah. But it's expensive.
It is. It's very expensive. And that's cheaper than the annual.
I was like, no, I didn't stay here that long.
I know.
You just take a tent and stay on the ball with everybody else.
It's crazy.
I've been there enough. There's plenty of them.
I I wanted to go in a closed session, but I, it was over some land and some things kind of fell through for right now, so.
I thought we needed something for planning.
We do.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, let's do a short one. Let's do a short one. I'll make it really short.
Katie, I'll take note of time we leave.
Okay, so you need a motion then?
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion to go in a closed session for the purpose of discussing the character and professional competency of an individual as well as potential pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.